I'd like to call the Prince William County Public Schools Meeting to Order. We will start the evening off at the request of the Woodbridge District Representative, Ms. Lori Williams, with a moment of silence. Thank you. We are moving on to the Pledge of Allegiance. Students in the audience, Boy Scouts, Cub Scouts, Girl Scouts, anybody, students in the audience, if you could come forward, I see some of you.
ROTC.
Was ROTC here? I'm sorry. ROTC, come on forward here. If you can lead us in the pledge and then afterwards give us your name, your grade, and the school you attend, please. So, everyone rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. You're into the microphone. Your name, grade, and where you go to school?
My name is Cadet Lieutenant Commander Lynda Goodson. I am a senior and I attend Potomac Senior High School.
I am Cadet Master Chief Petty Officer Gene Bechov and I represent Potomac Senior High School.
I'm Cadet Ince and Ania Whitby and I'm a sophomore at Potomac Senior High School.
Hi, I'm Cadet Carlos Baez. I also attend Potomac Senior High School and I'm a senior.
I am Serenity Kaloko and I go to Beville Middle School and I'm an eighth grader.
My name is Janet. I go to Pendle Mentory. I'm a part of the Girl Scout.
My name is Joel Agueda Diaz. I go to Beville Middle School and I'm in eighth grade.
I am Matthew Hallett as Feldit. I go to Beville Middle School and I'm currently in the eighth grade.
I'm Nate Huskovec. I'm in eighth grade at Porter Traditional School.
I'm Morgan Swindle. I'm a junior at Colgan High School.
I am Zoe Luzak and I'm a senior at Brentsville District High School.
Thank you. We are moving on to item 12.01, which is approval of the public meeting agenda. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting agenda as recommended.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second.
Mr. Deutsch, thank you. Discussion. Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Thank you.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Adoption of the consent agenda. A motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Williams.
I move that the Prince William County School Board approve the public meeting consent agenda as recommended.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Brand.
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion. Ms. Jessie.
Just wanted to comment on 1304 proposed rezoning for the Klein property. The impact statement. I don't know if I really need to... May I go ahead?
Yes.
I don't know if I really need to read the letter, but again, we have the school board reminding the board supervisors and various people in the public that we do not... the school board does not determine if a property is rezoned in spite of not having a space for schools being considered. And again, we sent a reminder to the board supervisor concerning our concern about overcrowding in our public schools.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Ms. Williams.
I just wanted to speak to the new course offerings and just congratulate our schools, Potomac, Brentsville, Colgan, and Garfield on expanding their course selections, especially in regards to plumbing and the increase for advanced level physical education at Potomac as well. And I'm also excited about Global Perspectives. I happen to be a Cambridge fan. In addition, I'm really excited to see their continuing expansion of water safety instruction at Colgan High School. And I just want to congratulate the schools specifically for expanding their course selection and allowing our students to continue to grow in their education. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Anyone else? With that, those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Thank you.
The vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Thank you. Moving on to citizens' time. Basically, we have, it looks like we have 10 total speakers, several joint speakers here at the very beginning. So, we'll be able to get through everybody here right away and then move on with the rest of our business. So, it's a small room today, so I don't know if you need to come up front, but you're certainly more than willing to do that if you'd like to. I'm going to call off the entire order here and then we can go from there. So, our first group of speakers is Joel Argüeta Diaz, Serenity Kaloko, and Matthew Tezfeldt. The second group is Ania Whitby and Carlos Baez. Third joint speakers are Omar and Lynda Goodson. Omar, I'm not going to try. I won't get it right, so I apologize. I don't want to butcher it that bad. Fourth is Lee Carter. Fifth is Danica Rome. Sixth is Zoe Luchek. Seventh is Morgan Swindal. Eighth is Barbara Laramore. Ninth is Riley Ocasey. And tenth is William Card. So, that is the order. So, our first group of speakers, Joel, Serenity, and Matthew. You guys are up. You will have three minutes. Everyone will have three minutes to do their citizens' time. At 30 seconds, you'll see the light turn yellow. That means wrap it up. And at zero seconds, it'll turn red. And I'll ask you, I will gently remind you that your time is up. We ask that everyone use proper decorum at all times. If you don't use proper decorum, we'll ask that you step aside. So, with that, again, our first speakers, Joel, Serenity, and Matthew. Your time will begin when you approach the microphone.
It is safe to say that Ms. Halloran's class of 11 students from Beville had a once-in-a-lifetime experience. At first, we had a mix of emotions. We were excited, scared, and nervous about going. When we all arrived, it started to feel real. Suddenly, the possibility became a reality. We all started to go through security and the anxiety hit not only us, but everybody else as well.
We jumped through hoops to get to the briefing room. Our classmate Ben got stuck because his birthday was messed up, so we had to wait for about 20 minutes. We verified our names and birthdates multiple times and guard dogs sniffed us. When we were at the briefing room, they talked to us about what to expect. After the briefing room, we had to stand on the lawn of the White House. We listened to the National Anthem of the U.S. and Italy. The President and the First Lady proceeded to come out on the front lawn along with the Prime Minister and his wife.
They gave us a short speech and then started coming around to shake the students' hands. When both of them got around to us, we got the pleasure of shaking not only the President's hand, but the Prime Minister's too. They also asked us what school we came from and how we were. It was a truly extravagant experience and we thank you, the school board, for offering Italian, Mr. Keon for choosing our class to go, and Ms. Halloran for teaching us Italian for all three years and doing a great job at it.
Thank you. Our next group of student speakers is Ania and Carlos.
Hi. I'm Carlos Baez with Potomac Senior High Schools Naval Junior Reserve Officer Training Corps. I feel as our unit's drill team commander, it's my duty to share with you the achievements that our team has made. Starting out as a freshman three years ago, the team had just began competing with other schools throughout Maryland and Virginia. And we actually made it to the Area Five Championships for the first time in our unit's history. Fast forward three years and we've managed to compete in Area Five competition every year since. And with progress really many these past years, we've actually managed to get more trophies in our entire unit's history in that one year combined. So, our unit was formed in 1996. It's over 76 trophies that we've earned. With that much momentum buildup, it's no surprise that we want to make our goal known, that we want to go to Pensacola, Florida for Navy national competition and come back hopefully with first place, bring more trophies for Potomac Senior High School. This can't be done alone, however, as drill is only one of the handful of teams that we have at Potomac Senior High School. Another team that we have is represented by Ms. Ania Whitby and that would be our athletic team.
Good evening. My name is Ania Whitby and I've only been in the program for two years. And in these two years, I've come to really love and enjoy PT. For those of you who don't know, physical fitness is, it plays a significant role in ROTC. And in the words of the late Biggie Smalls, "If you don't know, now you know." PT helps instill discipline and increases self-esteem, because let's face it, who doesn't like to win? And we've only started competing in the last three years. And in those three years, in our last year alone, we've been able to win 77 trophies and ranging from first place to third place, which really capitalizes on our strength as a unit, which is a lot now, because we've grown our beloved family from 128 cadets to 276. And we've won these trophies at field meets, which consist of 16x100s, 8x200, push-ups, sit-ups, and trolley. And participating in these helped the students build onto the structure that they've provided for us here and helped us utilize our leadership positions. And as students in these meets, we get to decide who does what for the corresponding events and make sure that they are executed properly. And my favorite of them all is to motivate the cadets to have fun in a professional environment. Because here at Potomac, our goal is to promote, you know, success with camaraderie. Thank you for your time.
Our next group of student speakers are Omar and Lynda. Omar.
Good evening. My name is Cadet Lieutenant Commander Lynda Goodson, as I told you guys earlier. And I'm here representing Potomac Senior High School and I'm here to tell you about our successes in community service within NJROTC. Last year, our cadets were involved in a variety of different activities to include color runs at Fort Belvoir, Military Appreciation Day at Chick-fil-A, letters to soldiers, and many other community service activities. As a result, we got over 2,100 hours of community service last year as a unit and 640 hours for school support as well. And for this year alone, we already have 1,800 hours, which by this year, I mean from April until present time. And we plan on continuing our mission, which is to instill in student citizenship. So, I really think that our successes and our advances with community service reflect the NJROTC goal, which is to instill in student citizenship. And as a result, also helps cadets increase their leadership abilities and, which helps them both within the unit and through school to become better leaders and examples for fellow students.
Hi, yes, my name is Omar Gene Bechov and I'm also here to wrap things up about the NJROTC program. Now, what I can say about the program is that it instills not only discipline into cadets, especially at such a young age, but also build character and eventually become good and great leaders. Now, this is more about building your citizenship, building your character. And I appreciate that we, as a unit, are able to branch out and go towards middle schools and be able to recruit kids and tell them that the program is more about, like I said, instilling discipline at such a young age, which is more importantly about character development. Some things we do is we volunteer at the elementary school as well. We go to Mary F. Williams and River Oaks Elementary, providing their field day. We also have adopted the school road Panther Pride Drive and have been cleaning it up every year since then. And besides that, within the last three years, being able to go from a battalion of about 100 cadets to a strong 250 regiment has been one of the most challenging and inspiring things in my life. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lee Carter. Lee? Lee going once, Lee going twice. Next speaker is Danica Rome. Danica?
Hey, so my name is Danica Rome. Lifelong resident of Manassas. My record's on file. I actually came here to, hopefully it won't take too much time, I just wanted to say actually a genuine thank you to you guys. Seven of you all, without dissent, agreed to start the non-discrimination task force, or at least to get the ball rolling for Dr. Walts. That's awesome that you guys actually found common ground. At this point, the school board gets a lot of flack for infighting and everything else, but this is one where seven to zero, you guys found common ground. And that's great. That's really, really, really good, especially at a time where the debate started really rancorously. And, I mean, you guys worked together, Ms. Satterlight and Ms. Jelsoft, I know you guys worked together. Ryan, you got the entire ball started in the first place on this. I mean, so it's really good to see a lot of people come together on this. One thing that I want to mention is that this report keeps coming up. And I just want to take a quick second to talk about this thing. It was called the Sexuality and Gender Findings from the Biological and Psychological and Social Sciences Report, that two doctors who are currently at Johns Hopkins, they wrote a paper about this saying that this thing was, the way that they put it, was disavowed. That the idea here, that the entire basis of the report is basically saying that there's somehow a problem with, you know, LGBT identity at its very root science core. And this is what they had to say about that. They just said that it's not true. They said that the published report, we believe, mischaracterizes the current state of science on sexuality and gender. The report was not published in the scientific literature where it would have been subject to a rigorous peer review prior to publication. It purports to detail the science of this area, but it falls short of being a comprehensive review. They further say, "We do not believe that the report cited above is a comprehensive portrayal of the current science and we respectfully disassociate ourselves from its findings." And this is a letter that was published in the Baltimore Sun, September 28th. And they cite other reports that talk about what that report was missing, like a post-2010 work by Dr. Mark Hasselbuehler of Columbia University. And thereby underemphasizes the negative role that stigma and oppression play in LGBT mortality and health behaviors. It's really, really, really sad to come up to the microphone and ever have to even think about discussions of suicide, to think about discussions of discrimination and discussions of bullying. It's as real as it gets. It really, honest to God, is as real as it gets. And it's really scary. I know what it's like to be that scared kid who was too scared to come out in school. I know. Because I lived with that for 20 years before I actually had the courage to do it. Anything that these kids do to put themselves before you and speak their truth, we've got to do what we can to protect them. We have got to do what we can to protect them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Zoe Luchek. Zoe? You guys are going, were you listed? It was Zoe and Morgan, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so you guys are going to speak together?
Yes.
The board does not disapprove. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Zoe Luzak and I'm a senior at Brentsville District High School.
Hi, my name is Morgan Swindle and I'm a junior at Colgan High School. We are here today as members of Y Street. Y Street is a youth volunteer program of the Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth that promotes healthy living in Virginia. We are here to talk about the 24/7 campaign, helping Virginia schools be tobacco-free 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We are working for 100% comprehensive tobacco-free school board policies. The main idea is that tobacco products or electronic cigarettes are not being used by anyone, anywhere, at any time. The Prince William County School Division is doing a great job to commit to healthy students, staff, and visitors. We are asking you to update our tobacco policy so that it is clearly 100% comprehensive. We have provided a copy of our current tobacco-free policy and regulations in your folders. Currently, you have a smoke-free policy and two tobacco-free regulations for students and staff. We suggest using the same language in all three documents to increase understanding and consistency of our division's policy.
First, we recommend updating the definition of property. In our policies, it specifies many places where tobacco is prohibited, but there are many potential gray areas it may not cover. Include all school premises inside and out, whether owned, leased, rented, or chartered. Currently, it only covers the insides of certain buildings and vehicles. Include any school-sponsored events or school-related events on or off-site. Remove the ability for principals or directors to designate smoking areas on grounds outside school buildings. Second, prohibit the use and distribution of tobacco products containing nicotine and electronic smoking devices, whether on or off-site. Currently, it only covers the possession by youth and does not include the use or distribution by staff, visitors, and contractors. Third, define tobacco product and tobacco use to electronic smoking devices and products containing nicotine. Using these terms ensures that all new and future products, like liquid nicotine, are covered. Fourth, require consequences for visitors, which support administrators and staff on the ground to ensure the policy is enforced. Fifth, add provisions to include tobacco-free signs, which help to further enforce the communication and visibility for your tobacco policy. Finally, expand the language to provide referrals to cessation resources for staff. Schools do not have to actually provide the resources, but have information available for the staff seeking help.
As a partner and resource to the Prince William County School Division, we are here to help update our tobacco policy so that includes all tobacco-free language. In your folders is model policy language you are free to adopt. Once you decide to adopt new policy, clearly making your schools 100% comprehensively tobacco-free, we have great ways to show our support. First, we'll provide free tobacco-free signage to all schools in your division. Second, our free tobacco-free toolkit will be sent to all schools. Third, we will add you to our map of 100% comprehensive divisions. Finally, in your folder, you will find examples of how we can help your school division earn positive publicity for updating our policy. On behalf of Y Street, we thank you for taking the time to learn more about the 24/7 campaign and we hope you will join us in becoming the 24th school division with a 100% comprehensive tobacco policy.
Thank you very much. Like the remaining speakers know how they sped up to stay within time, just to make note of that. So, very well done. Our next speaker is Barbara Laramore. Barbara?
Hi, friends. You guys were so nice to me last time. I decided to come back. You know why I'm here? I'm here to talk about more physical education and recess in schools. The last time I was at my advisory council at my school, the vice principal was laying out this complicated behavior chart organizational thing that she said was, "Oh, it's amazing. This is new. I'm so excited about it." Which was great. I'm so happy for her and for the kids, but what if we didn't need to have these incredible, difficult behavior charts? What if we gave the kids, addressed their needs, and treated them like children and not mini-adults? So, I was at the pediatrician's office today and, you know, American Academy of Pediatrics says they need 60 minutes of physical activity, rigorous physical activity a day. Out of six hours, six and a half hours, that is half of their waking time is spent at school. And as of right now, they get 15 minutes in that six and a half hours on the days they don't have PE. So, that is obviously not enough, not even meeting half of that requirement according to the American Academy of Pediatrics. So, wanted to put that out there, wrap your mind around that. While I was at home, my friend suggested, "Hey, girl, why don't you do something for your son, for him right now, because this could take some time to get some minds turned." So, she suggested I get a wiggle seat for my son so that he could wiggle and turn and twist and so that he was able to get some wiggles out right now at school. So, I've ordered it. It's on its way and I hope that other parents will take up that suggestion and get on Amazon. It's $50. Ask Grandma so that you can get something for your kids right now. What started me on all this was that I was having lunch with my Fairfax County friends and they said, "Oh, yeah, our kids get three Pees a week and 30 minutes of recess a day." And I was like, "Whaaat? That's not fair. What? They're across the river. Like, they're spitting distance from my house. How can that be so disparate? How can there be such a difference?" So, I know that there are loving, caring people in Prince William County who want the same thing as their kids in Fairfax County. So, whatever you can do to try to close that gap for our kids in Prince William County. Let's see. Where am I? Okay, being in good shape, increasing your ability to learn. After exercise, people pick up vocab words 20% faster. So, the kids who are sitting there, still unable to move, they're kind of stagnant. But once you get them up and moving, get them to take that test after 20 minutes of physical exercise, they have a 20% increase in what they're able to remember. So, just keeping that in mind. Lots of suggestions, lots of good times. Call me, text me, email me. Let me know if you have... I have lots of suggestions for you. I know I'm running out of time, but there are a lot of people behind me on this, lots of moms who feel the same way. But you know where they're at right now? They're hustling their kids to gymnastics, to softball, to T-ball, to everything. So, they're not able to be here right now. So, let's get more PE in schools. Yay!
Thank you. Our next speaker is Riley Ocasey. Riley?
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, board members, and Dr. Walts. My name is Riley Ocasey and my address is on file. A recent Washington Post article reported that one in four U.S. teachers are chronically absent, missing more than 10 days of school. While it's clear that these absences have a negative impact on their students, the reasons for these absences primarily relate to school climate. Last year, PWEA's "It's About Time" campaign resulted in some positive changes, yet there is more to be done. Our educators face more and more demands with fewer resources, less support, and very little pay. PWEA has continuously addressed concerns regarding professional treatment of employees, loss of planning time for teachers, excessive meetings, and contract concerns. These concerns continue to plague our employees and change is needed now. Prince William County schools will continue to lose the best of the best if this division does not address the morale of its employees. There are simple fixes. Demand that all employees be treated with respect and hold those individuals accountable who do not. In order for teachers to be effective, they require planning time. Taking this away not only impacts teachers, but is detrimental to our students. Honor this precious time needed for our students. Look at the amount of meetings held at individual schools and develop a reduction plan. Are three to four meetings a week necessary? Too many meetings, issues with contract hours, demands to stay after school with no compensation, and mistreatment of employees is taking its toll. Enough is enough. This is supposed to be a world-class school division and our employees must be treated like they work in one. Otherwise, more educators will leave. If we want to improve teacher absenteeism, addressing the morale is the first step. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ocasey. And our final speaker is Mr. William Card.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members. My name is Bill Card. I've been here before. My address is on file. At a previous board meeting, the Constitution was mentioned as a source of comment or concept that turns out was decidedly non-constitutional, isn't supported by the Constitution. So, I brought a copy for all the board members. You'll note when you read it that many of the, there are many common misperceptions that will be dispelled, and in particular, the comments from four weeks ago. It calls for a government where no one person or one body has power. It really calls for this conflict, constant conflict between branches of government. And certainly, that would work here well. There are many things, like, you know, a common misperception is that there's church and state separation, as in the Constitution. It is decidedly not. I carry one everywhere I go. I would recommend everybody do so. However, it does track nicely in many ways with the draft ethics policy that I hear heartily endorsed. Ethics isn't a new concept. Proverbs 29, 2,600 years ago, tells us, "He that being often reproved hardeth his neck shall suddenly be destroyed, and that without remedy. When the righteous are in authority, the people rejoice; but when the wicked beareth rule, the people mourn." Many of us are indeed in mourning right now and witness, you know, recently, the expansion of RecallSawyers.com. Imagine, to my surprise, to find people that were concerned enough about their community to stand up, an organization called RecallSawyers.com, to deal with this problem. Mr. Chairman, you might take heed of the subject and moderate your behavior. With that, I have also provided superintendent with a copy of the much-maligned this evening study that we're working our way through right now. Mr. Superintendent, if you are forced to go down the path addressing the LGBT issue as a special set of rights... Mr. Superintendent, if you are forced to go down the path addressing the LGBT issue as a special set of rights, as noted before, the chairman's initiative is not in the best interest of this community. And I think rather than depend on a skimpy article from the Baltimore Sun, I'd encourage you to read the report. It's not an easy read because it's not political and it is, there's, it'll take some time. It'll take some study. And it's not conclusive in all respects. And I would, most things I don't read the introduction, but I would recommend it very highly because it talks to the methodology and the results.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good luck, sir.
Moving on to the business of the board, we've got item 15.01, the Strategic Plan Report. I will throw this to Dr. Walts. Dr. Walts?
Thank you very much, Chairman Sawyers, members of the board. We're very excited tonight to have our first report on the new strategic plan for 2016 to 2020. This is our 2020 vision in PWCS for our graduates who are being prepared to compete in the 21st century global community. So this five-year plan has now been in place one year and we have one year's worth of data. Before I turn it over to Associate Superintendent Goss, I would just like to say at the conclusion, we will also have the level associates come forward and briefly spend a little bit of time talking about some of the new things that we are doing to help close the achievement gap. So while we often boast about the things that we're doing well, we also recognize that we have certain achievement gaps that need to be addressed and we are very vigorously reviewing the data and working with others at the school-based level and teachers to understand how to best interpret that data, how to reflect on the current research and best practices, and how to alter instruction in order to help each child to be successful. So with that, I will turn it over to Ms. Goss.
Good evening Chairman Sawyers, School Board members, and Dr. Walts. Tonight, we will be presenting the current reality of our school division. The data presented is the first strategic plan report for the new 2016-2020 strategic plan, as Dr. Walts said, and it was adopted in June of 2015 by the school board. The data tonight reflects where we are in the first year of working to achieving all of the goals set forth in the 2016-2020 strategic plan. You will see success and challenges within this data. Tonight, we have some definite areas of improvement and those will become clear as we share each of the data points related to our goals. The focus of the strategic plan is on improvement. And again, this plan was adopted by the squad in 2015. It requires us to benchmark against state averages and sometimes other school divisions as context. Tonight's presentation focuses on the 2015-16 school year data plus some historical data for perspective. It provides us with the opportunity to examine and reflect as a school division on our current reality as well as to set priorities for moving forward and closing those achievement gaps. The strategic plan has five main goals. The centerpiece is Goal One, which focuses on students meeting high standards of performance. The other four goals serve to support school division's focus in Goal One. In addition, the school board adopted the 2020 vision for graduates. This vision you see before you includes expectations for graduates from PWCS like the pursuit of advanced opportunities, career and technical education, using technology, and participating in the fine and performing arts. Goal One again is around student achievement and this is really the bulk of tonight's presentation, looking at those measures. This slide begins the presentation of our current reality. You will notice red lines and red arrows on several of the slides tonight. This is only an indication of the strategic plan goal to increase performance in a given area. It is not an indication that all the data on the slide is increasing. This specific slide that you're looking at now is drawing comparisons going back to 2007 and '08 with respect to the number and percent of schools that are fully accredited. Of course, our goal is to have 100% of our schools fully accredited and this is clearly a place where we are working to improve from the current 90% of schools that are fully accredited. Here on this slide, we are comparing our federal accountability pass rates in reading and math to other school divisions in Northern Virginia as well as with the state average. Last year in reading, we were number five out of the nine school divisions. This year, we are again number five. In math last year, we were number five in math and this year, we are number six when compared to the other school divisions. Our goal is to keep striving to be number one among all of those school divisions and we want our average pass rates to be increasing. This past year, our pass rates decreased by 1%. This is yet another look at the division pass rate in reading over the last three years. We had a significant increase of four percentage points between 2013 and 2014 school year and the 2014-15 school year. However, we had a 1% loss this last school year. Again, the red arrow indicates that the strategic plan states that we should be increasing our pass rates each year. Here we are looking at our division math pass rates. These graphs show a three percentage point gain between the 2013-14 school year and the 2015-16. And again, we had a 1% percentage point loss this past year. We are committed to getting our achievement increasing again. The next eight slides that you will see look at the current reality with respect to achievement gaps among our student groups. You will see places where we must improve and it is important that you know we are committed to closing those achievement gaps. We are looking at both trends and a comparison of the student groups to each other. We are focused on having 100% of our schools reduce the failure rate for every group of students and making marked progress towards closing every achievement gap. This is the first slide, looking at those achievement gaps comparing ethnic groups on reading achievement. You can see the comparison to state averages for the same groups of students. Most of these groups of students in Prince William County have increased their performance overall during the last three years and every student group except Asian is meeting or exceeding the state averages for the same groups of students. Again, we are making the comparison to the state because the strategic plan indicates that we will do that. And the red arrow indicates the strategic plan expectation is that performance will increase each, for each student year, student group every year. This slide again is focused on that reading achievement gap data among ethnic groups and shows a 16 percentage point gap between Black and white students as well as an 18 percentage point gap between Hispanic and white students. There was no gap this past school year between Asian and white students. We recognize that those gaps among the students, groups of students are larger than we would like. We recognize that Black, white, and Hispanic student performance dropped this past year while Asian performance stayed steady. The superintendent, superintendent staff, directors, supervisors, principals, and teachers are all focused on increasing the performance of all students and closing these gaps. We are working with urgency this year to increase the student performance again in reading with literacy being an instructional focus area across our entire division. The next two slides are looking at the achievement gaps among ethnic groups of students. However, we are now looking at math performance. The first of the two slides, Slide 11, that you're looking at now shows the achievement of ethnic groups in our county in comparison to state performance averages for the same groups of students. In this data, you can see that Black and white students in Prince William County are achieving higher pass rates than Black and white students across the state. In comparison, the state averages, our Hispanic students and Asian students are performing lower than the same groups of students across our state. We are looking at the pass rates here for Black, Hispanic, white, and Asian students again and comparing their performance. This time, we're only looking at Prince William County students. In this data, we see that the average pass rate for Black students decreased last year by 2% and for Hispanic students, it decreased by 3%. The pass rate for white students increased by 1 percentage point in 2015-16 and the average math pass rate for Asian students stayed the same at 91% passing. The next four slides, Slide 13, 14, 15, and 16, will examine the current reality of the performance of economically disadvantaged, limited English proficient, and students with disabilities. Going forward, under the Every Student Succeeds Act, limited English proficient students will be identified as English learners. However, because it has not been fully implemented and we are in a transition year, the next several slides will refer to those students as limited English proficient. We start again here with reading performance for these three groups of students and a comparison of the performance between these students in Prince William County and the same students across the state of Virginia. While the performance of our economically disadvantaged students decreased slightly in Prince William County, they are outperforming the same group of students in the state. This is certainly not to say that we do not need to improve their performance because we do. The average pass rate for limited English proficient students in Prince William County also dipped slightly and is equal to the performance of limited English proficient students in the state. Our students with disabilities also had a decrease in reading performance but have a higher pass rate than the average pass rate for students with disabilities when looking across our state. Clearly, their reading performance for all of these groups of students needs to improve. The bar graph in front of you now on Slide 14 is only looking at Prince William County students. Here, we are comparing economically disadvantaged students with students who are not economically disadvantaged, limited English proficient students with students who are not limited English proficient, and students with disabilities with their non-disabled peers. The gap between economically disadvantaged students and students who are not economically disadvantaged increased by 1 percentage point last year. The performance gap for limited English proficient and non-limited English proficient students stayed the same and the gap between students with disabilities and students that do not have disabilities increased by 1 percentage point. Our gaps need to be decreasing, hence our goal to have every school decrease the failure rate for all groups of students. And again, we are focused on increasing that reading performance in this area at every level. The data in front of you now demonstrates our continuation of review of our current reality for these same group of students, but now in mathematics. And we're comparing their average pass rates here in Prince William County to the state. We see on the graph that our economically disadvantaged students have an average pass rate equal to that of the state. The average pass rate of limited English proficient students and students with disabilities is lower than the same students across the state. When we compare these students to their peers who are not economically disadvantaged, who are not English, limited English proficient, and who are non-disabled, we see that the gap in mathematics increased by two percentage points last year when looking at economically disadvantaged students and those that are not economically disadvantaged, between those that are limited English proficient and students who are not limited English proficient. The student, the gap between students with disabilities and those students without disabilities stayed the same at 35 percentage points. These are all performance gaps that need to decrease. In this slide, we are looking at the data with respect to strategic measure related to pass advance rates in Prince William County and Virginia. We are comparing our pass rates to all of Virginia's pass advance rates in reading, math, science, and social studies. Over the last three years, our pass advance rate in reading increased by two percentage points overall but stayed the same between the 2014-15 school year and the 2015-16 school year and is equal to Virginia's pass advance rate. In mathematics, we see that our pass advance rate has decreased and is currently one point lower than that of Virginia's. For science, our pass advance rate has stayed the same over the last three years and while we were one point ahead of Virginia in 2014-15, we are now one point behind Virginia's pass advance rate. The social studies pass advance data shows a five percentage point decrease over the last three years and is currently equal to the state's pass advance rate. While we are pleased that more than one-fourth of our students testing in social studies are scoring in the pass advance range, we want all of our pass advance rates to be increasing and of course, we want to exceed the pass advance rates for the state in all four subject areas. At this time, Dr. Casado will be presenting the next sets of data.
Good evening Chairman Sawyers, School Board members, and Dr. Walts. Now that we have finished the SOL section of the presentation, we're moving beyond just the SOLs. Some may be asking why there was not discussion about meeting federal accountability targets or those annual measurable objectives as in recent years. This is a result of the transition away from the No Child Left Behind Act into the new Every Student Succeeds Act, commonly referred to as ESSA. 2016-17 is a transition year for school divisions as the federal and state governments develop guidelines for the implementation of the accountability provisions of ESSA. 2017-18 is the year when all provisions of ESSA take effect, including these accountability components. In support of that development, the state of Virginia is currently seeking public input via a brief survey which is available on the VDOE website until November 9th. It can also be accessed from the News section of the Prince William County website. Virginia is planning on submitting their revised accountability plan to USED in March of 2017. They are awaiting federal guidelines, final federal guidelines, and the public input before developing their final plan. Currently, work is underway across the country at the local, state, and national level to interpret the law and develop plans for implementation. Local efforts in Prince William County include a team established by PWEA that includes staff from schools and central offices as well as PWEA and NEA representatives. As the state application is developed and published, updates will be provided to the superintendent, staff, and school board. Moving on, I will be presenting the rest of the data for Goals One and Two. This slide shows one of the measures for our 2020 vision for graduates. This slide shows the percent of Prince William County graduates receiving at least one qualifying score on an advanced exam defined as AP, IB, or Cambridge. Prince William County Schools increased to 35% of graduates in 2015-16, up from 33% in the two previous years, receiving at least one of these scores. Prince William County Schools performed better than state and national averages in this area. One reason for our success in this area is the support of the school board for these exams. Prince William County Public Schools pays for these exams, so no student is excluded from participating. The next slide shows both SAT and ACT performance. Per the strategic plan, Prince William County performance is compared to state and national averages. On the SAT, Prince William County Schools outperforms the nation but remains behind Virginia averages. Prince William County performance peaked in 2014-15 and remained level in 2015-16. Side note, 2015-16 represented the last year of the old SAT. The new SAT was introduced in March and this is just data from the old SAT. So it was only students who took the test in January 2016 or earlier. Going forward, new trend lines will emerge because the test content and structure is changing, so stay tuned. Not shown on the chart but of interest, African-American students in Prince William County Schools outperformed national and state averages and Hispanic and white students in Prince William County outperformed the national averages. For ACT, Prince William County Public Schools does exceed the national average, as with SAT, and matches the Virginia average. All right. In order for students to achieve, they need to be in school. We have two measures in the plan that deal with student attendance. This is the first one. Both federal and state governments are interested in average daily attendance, both to see, you know, what percent of the time students are in school as well as this helps determine funding. Prince William County Public Schools maintains a 95% average daily attendance rate. Okay, moving on. The next slide shows the on-time graduation rates for Virginia, for Prince William County Public Schools, Virginia, and the same divisions we shared for reading and math performance earlier. Prince William County Public Schools has the highest on-time graduation rate in our history at 91.1%. at 91.8%. This ranks 5th among the comparable jurisdictions. Prince William County exceeded state graduation rates for all groups of students reported. Prince William County Public Schools was #1 among all Northern Virginia school divisions in terms of the on-time graduation rate for our English learners, and #3 for Hispanic students and economically disadvantaged students, and #4 for students with disabilities. Of course, we would like to be #1 for all groups of students. The on-time graduation rate includes all students who receive state-sanctioned diplomas within 4 years of starting high school. English learners and students with disabilities are allowed more time to graduate by law, so if they remain in school, they move to the next graduation cohort. We're not penalized for that because they're allowed that time. The next measure looks at dual enrollment. This is new to the strategic plan for the 2016-2020 timeframe. This slide shows us 2 ways to look at it. The first graph shows the percent of our graduates who completed official dual enrollment courses and received credit. That was 6.7% of our graduates, continuing an upward, but small but upward trend. The second graph shows all the graduates who took dual enrollment courses or received a qualifying score on an exam recognized by the Northern Virginia Community College, who would have been eligible for credit if they enrolled at NOVA. This does not include all AP, IB, and Cambridge exams, only those recognized by NOVA. Prince William County continues to expand dual enrollment offerings, and it's our expectation these numbers are going to increase in subsequent years. College readiness as a specific measure is also new to this strategic plan. Prince William County Schools is identifying the best ways to measure college readiness in connection with how that's defined by the Virginia Community College system. Due to changes that occurred in 15-16 school year with both the SAT and the PSAT, these measures will be put in place for the 16-17 school year and reported next year. In the meantime, the College Board has defined a benchmark of 1550 on the old version of the SAT as college-ready. At the overall level, Prince William County Schools had a 42.9% of our graduating seniors who took the SAT meet this benchmark. This is definitely an area where Prince William County would like to improve. This next slide shows us the percent of graduates who received advanced diplomas in 2016. Overall, and this includes advanced diplomas as well as IB diplomas. Overall, 52% of graduates in Prince William County received advanced diplomas. This is an area for growth. While we are seeing the graduation rates themselves increase, the advanced diploma rates for our various student groups are not all trending upward. The next 2 slides show the participation of students from traditionally underrepresented groups and gifted in advanced programs. This first slide shows elementary and middle school gifted participation. For each group, it's showing you the percent of students from within that group that are identified for gifted services. You can see there's quite a bit of variation. For example, 14% of minority students at elementary school have been identified for gifted services, compared with 8% of our disadvantaged students, 6% of English learners, and 5% of our students with disabilities. For perspective, overall, 12% of elementary school students in Prince William County Schools were identified for gifted services. Also, according to the National Association for Gifted Children, academically gifted and talented students make up approximately 6% to 10% of the total student population nationwide. At the middle school level, the numbers are somewhat similar. 14% of minority students have been identified, compared to 8% of disadvantaged students, but only 3% of our students with disabilities and 1% of our English learners. For perspective, 19% of all middle school students are identified for gifted services. One reason for the higher percentage of English learners identified for gifted services in elementary school is the result of increased efforts to target and identify gifted students in measures that are not as influenced by English. And since we do our major screening at grade 3, that's where you see the first effects. Okay, this next slide shows the same as the previous in terms of gifted, but also includes this AP, IB, and Cambridge courses, as well as participation in career and technical education courses. A quick scan of the graph shows you that participation in CTE courses is quite equitable across student groups, and participation in AP, IB, and Cambridge coursework is higher than in gifted. For gifted, overall, 17% of students in high school are identified for gifted, compared to 13% of minority students, 8% of disadvantaged students, 3% of students with disabilities, and 1% of our English learners, just like at middle school.
I'm sorry, Dr. Casado, Ms. Williams?
I'm sorry. It's identify or program participation. So are these kids who are participating?
I'm sorry, identified and participating in the program. Sorry, Ms. Williams. Yes, thank you. Okay. This next slide shows the percent of each student group that's been identified for special education. Overall, 10% of students in Prince William County Public Schools are identified and participating in special education. This varies slightly by student group, ranging from 5% of Asian students to 13% of our African-American students. National averages, according to the National Center for Education Statistics, show that approximately 13% of students nationwide are identified for special education. In terms of breakdowns, the national trends also include 13% of White students identified, 15% of Black students, and 12% of Hispanic students. As Mrs. Goss mentioned, part of our vision for graduates is including having access to the fine and performing arts, because research shows that that's beneficial to other areas of academic success. One thing Prince William County Schools does at the elementary level is have a strings program, and every year, parents are surveyed about this program. In spring 2016, 96% of parents indicated satisfaction with the elementary strings program. Prince William County continues to focus on scheduling arts classes so that students are not excluded from this based on other aspects of their schedule. A new measure to the strategic plan relates to the application of technology and moving students to those 21st century skills, so students are provided with opportunities to apply technology effectively, to gain knowledge, develop skills, and create and disseminate products that reflect their understanding. All right, now we're moving on to Goal 2, which is a climate goal. Having a safe, healthy, and positive climate is certainly necessary if you want successful learning. In order to support students, employees must be able to relate to students from all backgrounds. As a result, Prince William County Schools requires employees to complete professional development and culturally competent and non-discriminatory practices within 2 years of employment. Enhancing and improving our collaborative work as professional learning communities is a focus area for the school division. This next slide is looking at discipline, is again, part of our climate measure. This is also a new look at discipline data, and it's showing you the percent of each student group that received 1 or more discipline referrals. So focusing on 2015-16, overall, 13% of students had 1 or more discipline referrals. There is quite a range, again, from 6% of Asian students to 22% of students with disabilities and 21% of Black students. What this means is that Black students and students with disabilities are more than 1 1/2 times as likely to have had a discipline referral than the overall average, and more than 2 times as likely as White students. This is an area of focus for our schools. We recognize we need to close gaps with respect to discipline. Training and culturally responsive instruction is a critical piece in working to address this. Division's disparate discipline committee is focused on this area, and Level Associates work with their principals to identify areas to address. My office has developed reports to assist principals and other educational leaders in understanding their discipline trends over time. Here is our second absenteeism measure. Chronic absenteeism for students is an area of national interest. The new strategic plan includes this new measure. There are many ways you can define chronic absences. In Prince William County, the definition is a student being absent 10 or more days out of the year. Just over 1/4 of students in Prince William County Schools were chronically absent in 2015-16. This is definitely an area in which we would like to improve. Oh, okay. Again, as part of the environment, we want healthy students, so there's been a measure for years in the strategic plan about student wellness. Students across Virginia are assessed in 4 physical fitness areas: abdominal, aerobic, upper body strength, and flexibility. Our performance in these areas has been pretty level over time. The new plan calls for comparisons to the state as well as improvement. The table that's on the slide shows some comparisons in the abdominal and aerobic area for students in grades 5, 8, and 10. The reason only some are shown is because Virginia separates performance for boys and girls. And for both boys and girls, students in Prince William County had wellness scores higher than state averages at all 3 levels in 2015-16. The remaining measures in Goal 2, 1 talks about the importance of community service for students as well as maintaining wellness committees. As we heard from our JRTC students, they are clearly shining examples of the benefits of community service. Finally, one part of having a conducive environment for learning is having safe facilities. Our facilities pass compliance audits and meet building code regulations. The energy management program in Prince William County Schools has also resulted in savings. Since 2002, the energy management efforts have avoided $17.8 million in energy costs, allowing savings to be reallocated to other vital areas. And also something of interest, this year, Prince William County Schools started a new energy challenge. Schools are challenged to engage students and staff in energy conservation, education, and sustainability. Schools can win awards through meeting certain criteria. And finally, instructional equipment and our information technology equipment continue to be refreshed and updated on a regular basis as things allow. Mrs. Goss will now present on Goals 3 through 5. Thank you.
Good evening again. Goal 3 in the strategic plan is about family, community, and employee engagement, all of which are vitally important to us achieving our mission of providing every student with a world-class education that enables every student to achieve that 2020 vision of a graduate. Currently, all schools maintain and continue to look for ways to enhance the homeschool partnership. Recently, Title I brought in an outside consultant, Dr. Mapp, to assist our Title I schools in enhancing that parent engagement piece. Our schools have advisory councils. Over the past 11 years, all of our new principals have been trained in how to run school advisory councils. In beginning this January, all schools will receive, really, review training for school advisory councils. This slide is reviewing the overall satisfaction data from parents, elementary, and secondary students, teachers and teacher assistants, administrators, and central office staff. All groups except 1 secondary students have satisfaction above 90%, and 3 of those are above 95% satisfaction. Secondary students was the only group to not hit 90%, but did increase their satisfaction by 1 percentage point. Goal 4 looks at our qualified workforce. During the 2015-16 school year, we had 96% of our teachers fully certified and endorsed. This is 2% less than the 2013-14 school year, but it's important to remember that it is increasingly hard to fill some of our critical need positions that occur in science, mathematics, and special education. Of course, though, we continue to utilize our recruitment efforts and go out to colleges and work with our university partners here in the area to attract the highest quality candidates we possibly can. This slide is looking at nationally board-certified teachers. We have a target of having 1 nationally board-certified teacher for every 500 students. We currently are slightly below that target with 1 nationally board-certified teacher for every 519 students. We continue to improve, though, each year. This next slide looks at the strategic objective that deals with professional growth. Professional growth is an important part of the continuous improvement of our school division. Some of the highlights are our professional performance process, which is really a standards-based evaluation system. We have a mentoring program for our new teachers, our first-year teachers, and that lasts for 3 years. And we have professional growth plans for all of our employees. We also have really hundreds of opportunities in our professional development catalog for teachers to attend professional development right here in the school division. We are an equal opportunity employer, and we are committed to keeping our salaries as competitive as possible. Last year, the school board approved a step increase for all employees this year, fiscal year 17. This slide reviews 3 years of teacher turnover data. The red line demonstrates the national average of 12%, and while we increased by 1%, we are still below that national average turnover rate, and we are retaining 90% of our teachers. Goal 5 looks at organizational alignment and is the last area of the strategic plan that we will review our progress on in year 1 of this plan. The internal and external performance reviews that are referenced in this slide occur on the operations and support sides of our school division. The zero-based budget analysis that occurs with each budget cycle and the current staffing studies are examples of these types of reviews that are occurring in the school division. Strategic Objective 5.2 looks at the equitable use of funds. We are currently meeting the goals and objectives in this area. For fiscal year 2017, we are slightly exceeding the 3% replacement value with a 3.4% replacement value, and we are utilizing budgeted funds for the ongoing reductions in class size. Our funding ratios are reviewed yearly in preparation for the next year's budget. We will be moving into another budget season very soon. I'm sure everyone's excited about that. Our internal auditor continues to conduct audits on a regular basis throughout our school division. Strategic Objective 5.3 is looking at fiscal integrity. It's important to note that this slide refers to an unqualified opinion for the audit. This really means that there were no restrictions on it. In other words, we can say that Prince William County received a clean audit, so although unqualified appears to be something negative, it's actually something positive, and it does demonstrate that we do have fiscal integrity here in our school division. As we close out the first presentation of the strategic plan, we certainly want to say that we are celebrating the work of our teachers, administrators, and central office staff, like our graduation rate, especially our graduation rate for English learners, and the increasing percentage of students receiving qualifying scores on AP, IB, and Cambridge exams. However, we clearly have places in which we have a sense of urgency about improving, like closing our achievement gaps between our groups of students. We are committed to our mission of providing all students, that means all students, a world-class education, ensuring that we are making marked progress in closing those achievement gaps and having 100% of our schools fully accredited. As you heard the other night in the Title I presentation several weeks ago, we are working with Level Associates in schools to find ways to replicate excellence across the division. Collectively, all of the student learning and accountability offices are accountable for building instructional capacity amongst our teachers. They are expected to be monitoring the implementation of best practices and the actual impact on student learning. As a team of offices, they are focused on, this year, on working together to provide coordinated services and support to schools. Additionally, each of the 7 offices is implementing actions that are in direct response to the achievement data you saw tonight. I will give you some of those next steps, those action steps that each office is following. The Office of English Learner Programs and Services is closely monitoring the academic success of each English learner, levels 1 through 6, through a quarterly progress and achievement process. Based on what's seen in those quarterly progress and achievement reports, they are providing specific feedback and coaching support to ESOL teachers based on that progress. They are also focused on enhancing and increasing family outreach regarding the graduation plans for English learners. We know that parent involvement and partnership makes a positive difference in students reaching that graduation on time. They are also providing specific professional development and job-embedded support on the implementation of the English language development standards framework, along with the content standards. Our Office of Special Education is focusing their support and partnership this year with schools on positive behavior, interventions, and support to ensure that students are in school and available to learn. This important partnership will address, or help to address, that disproportionate discipline data that you saw tonight for students with disabilities and African-American students. They are also helping to refine multi-tiered systems of support through our Coordinated Early Intervening Services specialists, otherwise known as CEIS, and their supervisors and admin coordinators are focused on helping with that multi-tiered systems of support as well. The Cluster Supervisors and Administrative Coordinators are focused on assisting teachers, select and utilize diagnostic prescriptive reading tools for struggling readers. Our monthly update meetings and our monthly meetings with teachers at schools are now including instructional components and how to continue improving instruction based on student data. The Office of Student Learning has collaborated with teachers at all levels to develop and implement this year curriculum units of study at the appropriate cognitive level for a full range of learners. These units include culturally responsive instructional strategies and strategies to meet the needs of students with disabilities and English learners. They really map out for teachers how to fit all of those best practices together in a unit. They are providing targeted professional learning opportunities based on summative, formative, and diagnostic student data at schools. The Office of Student Services is providing assistance and support to staff, parents, students, and schools on the prevention and intervention programs, health services to address barriers to instruction. And... And the removal of this barrier, of these barriers clearly enables all students to be successful. They're working collaboratively with counselors to analyze data to determine certain, if certain groups are underrepresented at schools and special programs such as gifted education, specialty programs, and advanced placement coursework. And they're working with counselors to develop action plans to increase identification, participation, and representation. Our counselors, as you are already aware, our Office of Student Services is working with counselors, and they continue to look and design interventions for individual and group counseling related to emotional or mental health issues. And our folks are continuing to expand those interactive evening seminars for parents to empower our parents with strategies to address serious issues like bullying and suicide. Our Office of Professional Learning, this year, the school board provided funding for seven coaches, instructional coaches, and those coaches are now working exclusively in seven elementary schools, four middle schools, and two high schools. They are working to support and coach teachers, provide job embedded staff development based on the data, and to support the collaborative learning teams by helping to build collective efficacy, which we know from research is vital to what's improving student learning. In support of all of the offices, providing those coordinated services that I spoke about before, they are helping to align our practices and develop common vocabulary by collaborating on and facilitating professional development for all of the staff in the seven offices in student learning and accountability on topics such as professional learning communities, data analysis and dialogue, root cause analysis, instructional rounds, and adaptive schools techniques. The Office of Student Management and Alternative Programs is focused this year on expanding access to online learning options through the virtual high school. They are also still focused this year on ensuring that 100% of the students who receive disciplinary action through OSMAP are offered multiple educational opportunities to meet their individual needs, so they remain on track for on-time graduation. They also continue to provide professional development and support for teachers and staff in the non-traditional education programs to ensure that those staff have the needed skills and knowledge to give targeted instruction to address those students' individual needs. And of course, you heard a little bit already tonight that our Office of Accountability is assisting schools and offices analyzing our data and fully understanding our current reality so that our action steps are completely aligned with our areas of improvement. Dr. Waltz?
Thank you, Ms. Goss. In response to Vice Chairman Jesse's question about what we will do differently in order to close the achievement gap, I have asked the level associates to give one or two brief examples of what they're doing differently in order to help close the gaps. Would you please come to the microphone?
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, members of the school board, and Dr. Waltz. Each associate superintendent in school has a critical accountability to close the achievement gaps among Black students, economically disadvantaged students, special education students, and English language learners. Schools have identified specific achievement gaps that exist in their schools and have developed SMART goals and action plans to close those gaps. All elementary associate superintendents have been working closely with principals and assistant principals. Each elementary associate meets with small groups of principals and with similar academic needs through the collaborative team meetings. Specifically, one example of this that I have done this year is meeting with several principals and assistant principals in collaborative learning groups once a month. The focus of these meetings is data-driven based on the academic needs of students. The elementary associates are expecting tight processes and systems in place that allow staff to respond to the four critical questions of a professional learning community. What do we want all students to be able to know and do? How do we know when they know it? How do we respond when the students aren't learning by name and by need? How will we respond when students already know the content? Each elementary associate superintendent has visited collaborative planning meetings with teachers and administrators. We've conducted classroom observations and attended school improvement meetings to look for evidence of strategic alignment with the intended curriculum and learning outcomes.
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, members of the board, Dr. Waltz. Continuing at the elementary level, we are increasing the alignment of efforts as associates, principals, and assistant principals all have critical accountability outcomes in their evaluations that focus on closing the achievement gap. We begin by looking at the alignment of instruction at the school and at the classroom level. We will be focusing on administrators and teachers' professional growth plans and professional performance process documentation to support the school's goals of closing the achievement gap. At our collaborative team meetings, we have been focusing on using data, including group data, to identify areas of need. At the collaborative team meetings also, principals have been working together to identify areas of need and then share best practices to address them with the goal of using these strategies in their own professional growth plans. Also, at the collaborative meetings, in our last meeting, we used DeFor's work on the use of data in successful professional learning communities. The level associates are working with administrators to monitor efforts at the school level, and one example would be involving special education. Whereas the principal would be reviewing IEPs to see for alignment with the curriculum and the students' needs. The principal would also be reviewing lesson plans to determine the same, and they would be ensuring that there are effective systems in place for providing targeted support for students by name and by need. And then the level associates would be monitoring those efforts with the principals.
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, members of the school board, and Dr. Waltz. During our small group principal meetings that are held at respective schools, we are looking at student achievement beyond the all-students group or beyond the tip of the iceberg. Principals are digging deeper to understand how to reach Black students, limited English learners, economically disadvantaged, and students with disabilities performance across the last three years in reading, mathematics, social studies, and science. Principals have identified these youngsters by name and by their specific learning needs. We have committed to actionable next steps. Together, associates and principals are facing our current reality in order to chart an intentional and purposeful course of action via our professional growth plan goals and, more importantly, our day-to-day instructional leadership in classrooms and in grade-level collaborative team meetings. Principals have created schedules that value the presence and the engagement of the English speakers of other languages or ESOL teachers as well as the special educators when planning for instruction and when facilitating student learning. Co-planning and co-teaching matter because it's an all-hands-on-deck approach. Proudly, some of our schools have made double-digit gains to improve learning and to meet accreditation. Title I schools and non-Title I schools across the school division are sharing best practices by visiting other classrooms and schools to observe really good instruction. We are extending the learning within schools and amongst schools. Principals and teachers are embracing opportunities to replicate excellence. We believe that the answer is in the room. Recently, a group of principals observed a strategy group lesson on the standard of recognizing character traits within a text. We took advantage of the behind-the-glass professional learning resource that allows a clinical model of a one-way window for educators to observe instruction while the reading specialist provided real-time narration of the all-important title, tier-one instruction. This clinical model equipped principals to shift from the philosophy of teaching reading to the practice of teaching reading. Principals return to their respective schools to better coach literacy and to inform and affirm their teachers. In closing, Mr. Erickson, Mr. Gaffler, and I will continue to work shoulder to shoulder with each other and with the principals on data-driven instruction and collaboration. We are confident that over time, we can close the achievement gap while working on the right work.
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, members of the board, Dr. Waltz. Across all 16 of our middle schools and two traditional schools, we are focused on closing the achievement gaps by working to increase levels of student achievement among our African-American students, English language students, students with disabilities, and our economically disadvantaged students. Each of our middle-level principals joins me in having a critical accountability outcome that focuses on identifying significant gap areas, implementing strategies to help raise academic achievement, and quarterly progress checks to provide for monitoring any needed adjustments required to support student achievement gains. As a middle school group, all 18 principals participate in a minimum of four sessions of instructional rounds, where they, as a group, visit 10 to 12 core classrooms in a school to provide same-day feedback on the quality of the instructional core. Specifically, principals look at the learning objective being taught, the method of instruction, the level of student engagement, and determine if the work being done by students is, in fact, aligned with the curriculum objective and at the correct level of cognitive demand. It is through this process that our principals are building capacity to help ensure that the work done in classrooms is targeted to support student academic progress and to improve tier-one instruction. In addition to the instructional rounds, as a middle-level associate, I am conducting classroom walkthroughs with school administrators, resulting in additional real-time feedback on how to improve the instructional core. Through this week, I have visited 72 classrooms and supported building leaders in improving instructional practices by focusing on the core. In addition, our schools are employing a variety of targeted strategies to further support gains in student academic process, excuse me, student academic progress. Some examples include increased writing prompts used in conjunction with writing rubrics, use of computer-based supplemental programs like IXL, and additional math, language arts, instruction through a second support class. Thank you for this opportunity to provide a brief summary of the work we are committed to do at the middle level.
Good evening, Chairman Sawyers, school board members. Every high school principal, as part of their professional growth plans, received a critical accountability outcome for increasing or decreasing the achievement gap among identified groups at their individual schools. At high school, we've taken the approach of not only providing academic supports, but we've also taken the idea of providing student supports as well. For example, on many of the academic areas, most, many high schools have now instituted a flex period which allows for in-time remediation, where students can get the help they deserve during school so that we don't have to worry about keeping students after school. We've made great progress in the last couple of years, computer-based academic programs. IXL was first piloted at Potomac and Hilton. It's been very successful. It's spread to other schools. We've used Gradpoint at New Directions, Read 180 at Osborn Park, Achieve 3000. It's been very successful in these reading programs to increase our students. Osborn Park this past year introduced TEL, which is a formative assessment on a WEDA student, so we can tell how a student is progressing in their English language development periodically throughout the year before the WEDA test is taken at the end of the year. We use video technology. It's my dream that sometime in the very future, very near future, every principal using flipped classrooms could have assistance for special education and ELL students, where they could see a Prince William County teacher on their computer before they go into the class the next day, teach a seven-minute clip or so on an instructional objective. It would be our version of our own Khan Academy that the college board now advocates. And most importantly, it's with standards-based grading. I believe we made significant progress in helping subgroups become more effective and graduate, and I believe the commitment to standards-based. We still have a ways to go in becoming better in standards-based grading, but we've made significant progress over the years. And on the other side, we've also offered many student supports. Garfield just instituted a dinner program. If you stay after for remediation, we'll feed you at 4:00. That is something that's beneficial significantly. We've worked very closely with Serena Southers from the cafeteria area as food services. Potomac jumped on the idea of a second chance breakfast. Student comes in, misses the 7:30 chance or 7:00 chance for breakfast. He or she can run by, grab a second chance, very quick, grab-and-go breakfast, and that student's progress during the day will be enhanced by the fact they're not hungry anymore. We've also instituted TouchBase. It's become almost standard now in every school that twice a year, we will invite, we shut down school for a brief time, and we invite all parents in to assist us with the parent-student communication. Parent, better, parent-student communication, increase productivity with students. Thank you.
So this concludes our presentation on this year's progress on the strategic framework. I would like to say that you can tell we have a lot of ambitious work in front of us and plans that we're moving forward. I would also just like to say that as we approach the budget process, I think that one of the things we really need to take a look at is how do we provide the equity that is required to ensure that every child, regardless of their background, their experience, or their source of monetary background, is going to be on a level playing field. And we can't treat everyone equally in order to accomplish that. So that requires the school board to make some difficult decisions at times. But again, I know that you're all interested in providing the equity that will ensure the success of every child in our school division. Thank you. Closing?
Is that it? All right. I will open it up to questions. Not emotional. Can't talk. Should've taken a drink of water. I apologize. There was a very emotional presentation. Thank you. Sorry. Okay, here we go. Thank you very much. Let me... Well-served. Sorry about that. Okay. Open up the floor to questions. I will say that I have a few as well, but I will also submit... Mine don't need to be answered today, so I will submit mine in writing and also ask that we'll probably publish them in some way because the answers may already exist in some capacity. You may just need to point me in the right direction, but I have a few questions about the absenteeism and the teacher retention as well. So I will ask those questions and publish them so constituents can see them as well. But I'll open the floor to anyone else who would like to have it. Wow, I heard a lot of buttons. Yeah, why don't we just start with Ms. Ralston and work our way across the dais? Thank you.
Thank you. I only have a couple. One of my, one of my concerns is that when I was looking at, let me see the page. It's page 44, Teacher Turnover. In order to move us up, are we offering teachers an opportunity, and I've said this before, an opportunity to take advanced courses so that they can maybe get their masters or a special study in mind in order to improve where they are or make them feel better about it? Or is it that we don't pay enough?
So we do provide some tuition reimbursement, but it's a small amount, perhaps? Do you have that amount, Mr. Johnson?
When we say small, what's small?
It does not fully cover the cost of a class. It's a, it's a partial, it covers partial tuition for one course.
Is that on our radar to take a look at to see if we can improve that?
I would hope that the board would look at that and contribute more funds to that account. At the moment, when a teacher is interested in taking advantage of the tuition reimbursement, it's basically on a first-come-first, whoever turns in their announcement earlier. So once those funds are used, that's it.
And this is the money that we, as a board, set aside? And this is the money that we, as a board, set aside in our budget?
Correct.
Can you possibly get us?
The amount.
You know, a ballpark figure of what, I don't know, you picked the number of teachers, you know, somewhere around a hundred?
I would be able to do that.
Is that possible?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. My other question is, I had one, oh, on student, wait a minute. I have to go back this way. I was looking, page six. Federal Accountability Pass Rate.
I can't believe I did that. Sorry.
It's probably going to be your best guess on this one. How do we go from eighty-one to seventy-nine? What happened? What do you?
So you're looking at the?
I'm looking, oh, I'm sorry.
For the reading pass rate or the mathematics pass rate?
Wait a minute. I went over to math. I'm sorry. We just went down one.
We went down one, yes. So as each of the Level Associates shared, each of those schools, they've been working with the principals and the teachers in those buildings to really do a root cause analysis at each school because that's really pertains to each school, a one percentage rate, really. You have to dig down into each individual school and what's happening at those schools. So certainly, the Level Associates could, you know, share a little bit more detail around that. But they've already kind of explained that they've worked with every school to kind of dig deep into the data to determine. So basically, our teachers really dig down into that SOL data, look at the exact learning targets that are causing the concern at that school, and then implement strategies targeted towards those learning targets to improve instruction and learning.
Okay. And my last one, parent involvement is a big thing to me. So I'd like to know what we can do to help parents work with their kids. Now, a few years back, Minneville principal had Saturday classes for SOLs. Is there anything that any of my elementary or other associates can tell? What would you do to help engage and help parents to work with their children?
So they can certainly come and speak to what's happening at schools now, to engage parents and help them with those strategies at schools.
Yes, Ms. Ralston, we do have several schools that are doing Saturday schools, and some are being very active in getting parents to have their children come to schools. We have literacy events, you know, to bring the parents in. Some are principal-oriented, like for instance, at Carydell, where they have breakfast and books, for instance, yes. And so there's a range of events that they do to get the parents in, and it typically involves, we try to tie in activities that the kids are doing with how the parents can support at home. And Title One is very involved with that as well.
Ms. Ralston, with some high school students, I'm not sure they want their moms and dads with them when they come to school, but we've done a lot of good work with Flip Classrooms. As a parent, what you're getting with a Flip Classroom is you're seeing the instruction on the video sitting next to your child. When the student sees and gets to view it at nighttime, you're standing there beside them while they get to see the same lesson that you would see during the time period. And then when they come in the next day, they're already primed and ready, and the teacher just remediates the view because they've already viewed it. We've been very successful with that.
Is that in all of our schools?
It would be to a certain degree, and some teachers have to be willing to flip and be on TV, so to speak. But they're very beneficial as far as what I get to see when the teacher. Many of the objectives my students are taking right now in high school, I took in college, or, you know, President Reagan was in when I took those particular issues. So it's been a while since I've seen them. But the involvement with parents in that particular, with Flip Classrooms, is a wonderful technology and a wonderful addition that we've been using over the last couple of years.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms., um, wow, that's the, I finished.
Caught me a little off-guard there, but I think I'm prepared now. Thank you all for your presentation tonight. Credible amount of data. I should have counted the number of times where "data" was used. But thank you all for your presentation. I did have a couple of questions that I jotted down as we were going through the presentation. I guess I have an arts bias because I was a former teacher in the CFPA at Woodbridge High School, so I always will have that fine and performing arts mentality. There was one slide on it. It mentioned the equitable access to the fine arts for our students. And I know the strings was mentioned. What are some other things that we are doing to kind of provide that equity for all our students when it comes to fine and performing arts?
So as you said, we understand the need to have access. So one of the things that we've done is expand our strings program at the elementary level. We've also started elementary band, so we have that at two elementary schools. At the middle level, certainly, Mr. Bixby can come and speak to that, but there are a whole range of classes that students are able to access based on their interest and even perhaps their strengths. So we certainly continue to expand those offerings and look at ways that the schedule can be flexed. One of the things that Mr. Bixby's been working on is flexing the schedule for eighth graders, and he can certainly speak to those efforts.
Thank you, Ms. Goss. One of the things we've piloted in about a third of our middle schools this year is giving youngsters a chance to just not get stuck in the eighth-grade sequence of choosing between the encore rotation and the performing arts. So for the first time, we have youngsters who can take the encore and take a performing art, or take one performing art and double-dip into a second performing art. And we're trying to, we will work to continue to expand that, but we have a number of kids in six schools this year who have that opportunity so they don't have to pick and choose between an art class and a choral class. So we're going to continue to expand that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think the other piece to note is that at all levels, we actually provide instruments to students who cannot purchase those instruments on their own. And we service those instruments and make sure that no child, based on economics, is not able to participate in a fine or performing arts.
And I had one additional question regarding a strategic measure, I think it's 4.12, which is the National Board Certified Teachers. Again, speaking from personal experience, I had a couple colleagues that went through this back when I was a teacher, and these are very good teachers that became even better as a result of what they did. So I'm just kind of curious what we're doing currently in Prince William County Schools to encourage more teachers to go for their National Board.
We've had an initiative for several years to encourage and reach out to teachers. We use those teachers who have already gone through the National Board Certification as ambassadors. We hold meetings several times a year where we share with teachers who are thinking about doing this, how they can go through that. Our ambassadors, if you will, serve as mentors and assist teachers who are going through that process. And of course, we celebrate our National Board Certified Teachers each year in a ceremony with all of you.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, thank you for, to all of you for this report. This is probably one of the more comprehensive reports that I've heard since being on the board, and I really appreciate both the positive and negative, if you want to call it negative. I like areas of improvement because I think that's a better way of looking at it. I do have a few concerns and some questions. One, Rita, is it possible that we could get a typed copy of your statement that you made after the presentation about the improvements that you're making? Because it's easier for me sometimes to see it.
Sure, I can send that to you.
Thank you. And then on slide, I'm just going to kind of go down the list, and I don't expect to have answers to all of these tonight by any means because we're just now asking them, so. On slide fourteen, I'm interested to learn who composes the students with disabilities in that group? Like, are we talking students who are in special education classrooms, that are designating special education classrooms? Are we talking the whole gamut of students with disabilities?
Yes, we are.
Just because I think that, for the public's sake, we don't always, maybe we categorize students, categorize students with disabilities, so.
So this would be all students identified who were found eligible for special education services under IDEA? So this is all students regardless of the level of severity of their disability?
Thank you. I think that helps to understand that group a little bit because the diversity in that is tremendous.
It's a very diverse group of students.
And then also, I'm wondering, for slide twenty-two, it talks about dual enrollment and advance rates. So I'm wondering, could we see some data? Because what I thought I heard you say was these are dual enrollments recognized by Northern Virginia Community College. And I was wondering if I could see some comparable data for our other, like AP, Cambridge, IB programs? That breaks that down?
Sure. I can work with Mr. Basset because he works the most directly with the dual enrollment piece, but just to make sure I'm understanding. So we can provide a breakdown of what's included here and then what the other AP exams are in performance in those areas. Absolutely.
Correct. Thank you. I think that'll help when it comes to budget time and just general understanding of the programs and the students that are in them.
Absolutely.
In addition to that, I'd also like to see a breakdown of groups of students enrolled in those programs, minority students, black students, same categories, if you will. I think that'll also help understand who's participating, and maybe for us as a board, some things to think about on how we could reach students who are not participating or see that. Next, I think number two is, all right, I asked that, twenty-four. So on slide twenty-four, I also wanted to, I think I asked that, I'm sorry, twenty-five. So in gifted education, I'm wondering if we could see the breakdown of the different groups to include the racial groups and not just, like, I noticed that we have economically disadvantaged minorities, special ed, and LEP. Could we see it by race as well?
We can give that to you.
Thank you. And as far as staffing retention, I know that we're a transient area, and people are constantly moving and shuffling and deciding on what they want to do and not want to do. I'm wondering, I had heard that our hiring date may be later than some of our surrounding counties. And I was wondering if you could maybe provide us some information on when we hire or when we start the hiring process, like, in relation to our surrounding counties as far as in general? Like, I know, I'm sure, most people will, in June or in, I don't know, August, we do a big push, or surrounding counties would do a big push. I know hiring is continuous, but there's usually like some sort of target mass date. People go look for a job when they wanted to be a teacher. I don't know that information because I'm not a teacher. And I was just wondering the impact that they, that might also have in our ability to hire or retain staff? Because I imagine if we're competing with surrounding counties when they do their push hiring, I'm sure it would make a difference. I know that we go to colleges at the end of the school year and things of that nature, but I don't know necessarily that our public is aware of that and how that impacts our ability to hire and retain teachers.
So certainly, my colleague, Mr. Johnson, could provide that information to you.
I don't need it right now.
Regarding the?
I'm just kind of rolling through.
Regarding the hiring?
That's good. I approve of you not needing it.
I'm just kind of rolling through. And then also, I'm interested to hear more about, there was a section that you talked about counselors and the role that counselors are, provide to our students and families. So I'm wondering if we could maybe have a report at a separate time on exactly what counselors do at different levels, elementary, middle school, and high school, and their roles? Because I think that there's often a misperception from our families. I know there was in my worldview on what a counselor does versus what a counselor actually has to do. And I think that that will help better prepare our parents and our school families to interact better with counseling if we knew exactly what they did at different levels and what the expectation was. Because I think that that's important and imperative, and it's all about part of our strategic goals, working together. And then I agree with my neighbor here, Mr. Braun. The word "data" was, phew, every other, we were churning that out. What I didn't hear, and I'd like to hear, in some of our strategic goals for improvement is where are we incorporating fun? Because I don't hear any of that, and I know that seems kind of like a weird question from a board member, but I don't think you can learn without having fun. And I don't think you can absorb information or teach without some sort of fun embedded into your curriculum. And I know that may sound a little silly, but I'm not hearing any of that, and I'm sure it's in there somewhere. But I would just like to know some, maybe more of our creative strategies or how we're doing that, because I think that also speaks to the morale that.
Absolutely. So we all agree with you a hundred percent that fun matters.
Because we're data-driven.
But our strategic plan doesn't have a goal around fun. And so it wasn't included tonight. But we can certainly talk to you about how our schools are implementing fun in the classroom because you're right. It's a motivation for students, and it's a way that we engage students and encourage them to come back when they're engaged in their learning and they're enjoying their learning, right? And so we agree with you, and we're happy to provide some information around that.
Thanks. And like I said, I know that sounds kind of silly, but I think it really is one of those things that touches every facet of our makeup of our school community. And especially like with our reading and things like that. I know that at the elementary level, like, the students will dress up, and that's a part of getting our students to learn, and that's sort of what I mean when I say "fun", somewhere along in those lines as some of the ways that we're going to work on our improvement.
Absolutely.
So I just would like to hear a little bit more about that. And then also, two last things, because I'm trying to go as fast as I can. I'm wondering what impact, maybe three, I'm sorry. One question I did skip was, I wanted to know the impact if we are looking at it or if we're thinking about it in relation to our SAT and ACT scores at colleges, moving away from having that be a requirement? Because I know one of the things that I have been hearing from high school students is why we have to continue to do this if I know I'm going to go to a school where SAT doesn't matter. And so I'm wondering if any of that type of sentiment or feeling is interfering with our students' maybe desire or ability to concentrate or focus or put a priority on achieving a high score? Because if our student population isn't buying into the need to perform on SAT, then we're not going to get the results that we want, no matter what we do. So I'm wondering, and I know that that's a new trend, and I know that you had said that you were studying trends, so I was wondering if that is having any impact on our scores overall? Also, something I don't need right now. But when I went to the, she's a guy, shouldn't let me go places. When I went to the college night, that was one of the things that came up often from the recruiter standpoint, so I know our students are hearing that. And then next, and for our minority students, black students specifically, in relation to their scores, achievement gap, and disciplinary, I know that this has historically been a problem for Prince William County Schools, and I've said it forever, and it's still a problem. And I would like to see specific goals as to how we're going to deal with this. And I would also like to see in those goals, any type of education or training we're doing for our staff in regards to implicit bias because it's real and it is there, and our data shows it. If it didn't, we wouldn't have, there were a number of our student referrals specifically so high with minority students. So I know that that's something we don't, it makes people uncomfortable to talk about, some people, but I know it's real. I experienced it in my own family, so one of the things I'm sure you've heard me say is my husband was expelled from Prince William County Schools way back when. And one of the reasons he was, his final referral was, disciplinary referral, was for a confrontational stance. So I know that we've grown since the nineties in the way that we discipline our minority students and how we look at that, but I think that that's still an issue. And would like to see some specific ways that we plan to address or look at that. I know that we have a disciplinary committee formed, and we're well on our way, and I think that we've done great work. I just would like to know more about that. Also, not something I need to know right now.
Absolutely, but we certainly agree that it's an area that we need to improve in and that we're focused on. So I can certainly work with all of my colleagues to provide that addition.
to provide that additional, specific information that you would like to have.
Thank you. And I'm also wondering if there's a, if there's the breakdown of the student referral rates for high schoo, I mean, for elementary, middle, and high schools? Because I think also in regards to special education, I know something I've encountered a lot as a board member is a high disciplinary rate for our students entering into special education until they're identified. So that seems to be an area where there's a lack or there's a gap. And I know that there's not, I'm not sure, because I'm not a professional, if there's something that we can do?
Right.
Because of the current ways the laws and rules are written? Or just what the options are surrounding that? And then lastly, as far as parent involvement, I was just wondering if we could improve our communication in that area in regards to high schools? This was the first year that I heard specifically from a principal that they want parents to come into the schools and be a part of it. I mean, I agree with what Mr. Mulgrew said. I know my high school would rather me, high school would rather me not be at school. But I, but I don't think that the message is always clearly communicated. And I think part of it is a generational educational issue. My parents were not as involved in me, my educational process as a high schooler. But I think that has changed. And I'm wondering if parents are getting that message, I can't speak to any other generation, but specifically mine, to know how important it is for the staff and the administration of the school to feel that the parents are supporting their students? Not just the students knowing the involvement of their parents, if that makes any sense?
Absolutely.
So maybe something simple, and I'm just giving an idea, as more like, hey, come be a part of parents on the websites? Or when we write letters home, just a simple statement? More maybe bold-faced parents or something, something like that? Because I know in elementary, we all want to do. And in middle school, we're kind of like, eh, yes, no. Depending on what's going on in high school, we're like, oh, we're trying to teach our kids to be independent and accountable for themselves. But I think we're missing that parent component. And touch base, I think, is fabulous. And I also want to comment on the flipped classrooms. Fabulous. Have not experienced it in a high school level. Have experienced it at a middle school level from two different angles. One with a special education student and one with a more mainstream traditional student. And it worked very well for both of their needs. So I can attest to seeing it personally that the flipped classroom is great. I know it's not for everyone, but I do think that that's a wonderful idea. And I just want to say, overall, I can see in this year versus last year how the changes are being implemented in schools. And I'm seeing a positive effect. I'm seeing a lot of parents coming to back-to-school night. I'm seeing a lot more engagement. And I'm seeing a lot more communication of helping parents understand the curriculum, what their students are learning, and how we as parents should be involved, especially like the unit tests? Breakdown in four different, I think that that's really helping. And that also goes to helping close those achievement gaps. So I think overall that we're on the right course. I agree that we do have room to improve. We always do, but I can see the progress. So I just wanted to congratulate all of you on that because I think that that is definitely noteworthy and you should be congratulated on that. Thank you, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. But Dr. Walts, you raised your finger.
Yes, thank...
I can rephrase that. Raise this finger. Not, never mind.
At the request of Vice Chairman Jesse, we've been asked to reinstitute the best practices presentations. So the first one will be in December. And that is being shared with Garfield High School and Battlefield High School. So we'll ask them to incorporate some of how do the kids have fun while they're learning as a part of those presentations? Will that be okay with you?
That would be great. I just know that as a society, we're like, so like, our college, our kids have to go to college and we kind of suck the fun out of stuff sometimes. So I know it's important to learning, just like recess, so.
Second the motion for more fun? We are moving right along. Reminder, it's just after nine o'clock and we're on the first item after citizens' time. But it's an important one, I'll give you that, I'll give you that. Ms. Jesse?
Thank you very much. The chairman left the room and, yeah, he did leave the room. And so I asked him what was the score. And no, don't tell anybody.
It's 1-1 in the bottom of the third, Ms. Jesse.
Thank you. But because of what's going on in the heads of several people, I would like to just, first of all, I just want to say this because I know I've been a pain.
I know you.
I have been. The only reason I am on this board, the main reason I'm on this board, is student learning. And I asked you to share the good, the bad, and the ugly. And I just want to applaud you tonight because you did that tonight. And I truly appreciate it. Best practices says, until you look at your current reality, until you're willing to share that we are not closing the gap, that we are not where you don't develop a plan for improvement. Though I heard closing the gap, I think, a thousand times. And I am very appreciative because there were some slides that had, I talk about short graphs and tall graphs. I saw some teeny-weeny ones. And we've really got to be serious about that. I am, I want to just summarize some of the things. Again, I just want to congratulate superintendent, superintendent's staff. I know work when I see work. And I know you really put a lot of work into this. And I'll probably still be on your back, but it's about the kids. And I just want to say this about this board. There's been a lot of talk about this board and some of the problems that we've had in growing. I think the one strand of commonality in this board, and I think I speak for each one of us, that student learning is our number-one priority. We may not agree on a lot of things, but I think we all agree that our number-one job is student learning. And I think the other thing that I will say to you is that we will do whatever you need to improve student learning. And training, professional development. I've asked it before and everybody goes, whoa, we're doing great. We don't need anything. Yes, you do need things. And I would ask that you tell us what you need to improve learning? Because either these kids, we're going to pay for them now or we're going to pay more for them later. Because kids who are not learning do not do well on the streets. And so I appreciate what you're doing. One, I know, for the sake of time, we've got pretty much a 20-point gap with all the economic groups, with some varying maybe a point or two. The one gap that concerns me greatly is special education. We cannot have a 35% gap. And I would like to, at some point, to break that down because I have a feeling we've got autistic kids, we've got LD kids, we've got all sorts of categories. And I don't know if you have that? Because when you start to target, we can't just target the 35%. We've got to target very specific. It may be with autism, and maybe we need more training in that area. It may be with LD. It may be with reading. And I will say to you too, when we talk about, I wrote, I did a video or a presentation, and believe it or not, it's called "Nothing Happens Until People Are Having Fun." And it really doesn't. And I will tell you that I've been very blessed to see kids learn at high levels. And I will tell you that all those discipline referrals you have, when those kids start learning at high levels, you're not going to have to have a special discipline program. You will reduce, automatically reduce, the number of referrals that you have. We're asking kids who can't read at third grade, which is where the big thing happens, when the light leaves their eyes. And you're asking them by law to remain in school for another eight years and not know what's going on. So they're going to do anything to get out of that classroom, including being disruptive. Or they'll sit at the back of the room because high school kids and middle school kids do not want their peers to know that they cannot read. So I think if we teach them how to read and teach them at a high level, we will do well. The slides that, for the sake of time, those, the ones that really concerned me was slide 25, participation gap, the participation slide. And slide 25, 24, 25 bothered me because we're looking at LEP, look at 24, 25. Look at LEP, look at special ed, the participation. We've got to increase the participation in terms of parent education. I knew what to do to get my kids into those programs. I talked to a friend just last night. He called me and I said, you know that you can self, you can self-promote your own child for gifted ed. Our parents don't know that, so that for parent education. I would like to look at slide 23. And I want to relate that to the SAT. Your SAT, our SAT scores are 1507. They have been 1507 for a couple of years. The, this readiness piece, and I just ran into this from the State Department, from the College Board. And this is pretty much what it says, that unless children, students, students with a benchmark of 1550, if you get that, you are 65% likely to be achieving a B-point average during your first year of college. And the state of Virginia is pretty much at, for, I think it's, we're 42, they're 42, they're 40, 45. This is what's happening that concerns me because I've always been concerned about elementary kids. But you begin with the end in mind. So we have a 90% graduation rate. But what's happening when those kids leave us and they're not at 1550? And they're in school? What's going to be the dropout rate for those kids? Because the state of Virginia has its percentage of meeting college readiness. So they're saying right now that 64% of Asian kids in the state of Virginia have a chance, 65% chance, of making a B the first year of college. African-Americans, only 14% of African-American students, if their SAT is at 1550, have a chance. Then you look at Hispanics and whites are higher and all. So to Mr. Bix, I mean, not, to Mr. Mulgrew and to all of you, I would like you to develop a plan to increase our SAT scores and with SMART goals, to move off the mark. We keep saying, well, you know, we take a five-year average and we're doing great. That's what we put in the newspaper. And I would like for us to look at, how do we improve that? Now, I know that the SAT scores, the SAT is changing next year. The scoring is changing. But they're still going to have that college readiness benchmark parameter. And so that I don't go into the, when we get to our time to speak, I want to thank the superintendent and also I want to thank Ms. Jarson-Hart and also Rita Goss and also my friend over here, Ms. Diane Ralston, and particularly Ms. Ray Darlington for allowing us to visit Roanoke Public Schools. And we just came back and where they have set up an equity group where they look at whether or not these kids are doing well on a regular basis. They have a group of people, they meet monthly, and they look at where we are. Because these gap scores are not going to improve if we wait until the end of the year. And we need to come up with better strategies. And again, I just want to say thank you very, very much. I'm not going to leave you alone, but I won't be a pain. How about, Ray said, yes, thank you very much. You guys did a fabulous job tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jesse, Ms. Satterwhite.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Ms. Williams asked the question that I had for you also, Ms. Goss, for a copy of your next steps, because I couldn't keep up with everything you were saying. There was so much information. And also, all the comments that all the associates made. I'm not asking, ask for a copy of all of your comments, but I greatly appreciate everything that you contributed tonight. This is the first time since I've been on the board that we've heard the next steps following the strategic plan. And, you know, I read every page of the strategic plan. I looked at all of the data, saying that word. Thank you, Dr. Casada, Ms. Goss, for everybody who's contributed to putting this together because I know it's a tremendous amount of work each year. And yes, we've got some challenges. We've got successes and we've got challenges. And it's, it's to sound backwards or weird to say that I am excited that we are acknowledging that we have the challenges and that we're facing head-on what the next steps are. I think it's important for our parents to hear what the next steps are and to know that we're taking this very seriously. Because that's what we're here for. We're here for educating our students. And so for everybody in our school staff who's working so hard, from teacher assistants to teachers to principals, to all of you who are here in this room, thank you so much for the effort that we're putting into this because our kids are the focus. So this is, this was just fabulous tonight as far as the presentations. Ms. Williams, you said something about the SAT scores and colleges and what they're looking for. I have a son who's a senior this year, so I've been looking at a lot of college websites. And one thing I found that was of interest is that the schools that will waive the SAT and ACT usually require a certain grade point average. And the number I've seen is around a 3.5. So I don't think students are necessarily aware of that until they get to senior year when they start looking at those, at those college websites. So that's something to keep in mind. So schools might advertise their SAT, ACT optional, but they usually want the grade point average. And all of our students don't necessarily have that. They do need to work hard on making sure they're ready for the SAT and ACT. And one thing, too, that not all parents know until senior year is that it's a good idea to have your students take the test more than once. Because the more you take it, the more chance you have of improving your scores. And so that's something also we have to continue to work on educating our parents about. Trying to think of all the things I wanted to look at. It is great to see our high school graduation rate going up. That is our end goal line is the graduation rate. It's great to see that continuing to go up. And it's also been very interesting tonight to see the first strategic plan presentation and the new strategic plan. Again, I want to say thank you for the presentation tonight. I am looking forward to receiving a copy of the next steps. And I'm looking forward to seeing the improvement that our students are making as we continue with these next steps. Thank you again so much for the work that you put into providing us with that information tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite. Mr. Deutsch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, I've got four questions. Slide five, is the accreditation? So these numbers stood out just because they're fairly statistically significant. Can we talk about why our school, some of our schools aren't hitting accreditation? And we're actually having an increase in schools not hitting accreditation? I guess it looks like particularly on the middle school level. But what's, what's created that and what are we doing to fix that?
So I'm going to have Mr. Bixby come up and answer your question.
Mr. Deutsch, at the middle school level, we slid back with language arts, which in the eighth grade includes the writing, the writing assessment. In sixth, seventh, and eighth, youngsters are assessed with reading. And in the eighth grade year, writing is added. Two of my schools that had made full accreditation, Ripon Middle School and Stonewall, in their work perhaps overemphasized the reading and didn't keep the target in sight for the writing. And those two schools slipped back. So all of my, all of my five schools that are not fully accredited are looking at those areas. For instance, Bevel missed it by five kids, which is the equivalent of two eighth graders. You know, they take, it's five tests, not five necessarily students, five tests. That could be three reading and two writing. So Bevel showed great improvement, but fell five short. That's how close they were, literally five tests. And we've made improvements at Fred Lynn. And we've made improvements at Godwin. The year before Godwin, I believe, was short 20 tests. So we're close, but we just haven't made it. So that's why we talked about the laser-like focus. Ms. Jesse and other board members talked, Ms. Williams, I believe, talked about special education being such a broad category. Well, my principals are not, are looking at it by class, by group, by teacher, looking at the teacher who perhaps had a 75, 80% pass rate and the colleague who is lower, and looking at why that occurred? Because when you get real close, it's in those groups that you need to pick up the kids. It isn't necessarily the whole school, but it's targeted areas. And that's what we're targeting through the professional growth plans and the critical accountability outcomes. And I'm charged with... And I'm charged with benchmarking that quarterly and reporting to the deputy. And, and that's what we're trying to get those over. So of those five schools, four were very, very close.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Second question is on slide 21 with the on-time graduation rates. The one thing that jumped out to me on this slide is the English learners, we are actually at 77%, which is probably the biggest gap in terms of, like, we're farther ahead of any other division there by more than anywhere else. Can we talk to why we have such a high graduation rate for English learners as opposed to any other school division area?
We certainly can. I'm going to invite Dr., I'm going to invite Janine Sodki up, who is our Director of English Learner Programs and Services, to answer that specific question.
Hello. It's my pleasure to be up here and speak to you about this data point. Our high schools have been working really hard with our English learners in following their academic progress. We've been using that electronic system that we've built over the past four years in SMS that's referred to as a quarterly progress and achievement. And it generates the students who have a D or an F grade in any core area. And we look at that data at interim time so that there's enough time for us to make a difference with providing the supports that the students would need for academics or language development and the combination. So our teachers are looking at that at the semester one interim at week five and then again at week 25. So we feel that this is a major reason why we're making a difference for our students, providing them that assistance before there's, you know, failure in a class. So that's one major effort that we've been sustaining and maintaining now over these past few years. Another one is the parent education that we're doing about setting graduation plans, being side-by-side with your student, understanding what the requirements are and then how the family can support the student in meeting that graduation plan. So in our central registration services sites, we have parent orientation that happens weekly, sometimes daily, with the students' families and the older students as well. So we have one-on-one meetings with a bilingual counselor occurring with the students who are 17 and older.
Thank you so much. And then on slide 22, the dual enrollment credits. Do we have a goal for the percentage of students we're hoping will achieve dual enrollment credits? Do we have something we're shooting for? I know we had the AP presentation last meeting or two, within the last two meetings, and we had a specific target there. I don't know if we had a target.
The strategic plan itself just indicates increasing, I think, with the effort to expand the offerings, I think now that we've, now that we have a baseline, I think that setting, you know, you can see, as I said, microscopic improvement, it's going up, but you're, now we'll be able to establish some more specific targets at the global level and by school. The questions, I believe it was Mrs. Williams was asking about breaking down some of this as we do that, that's going to help us move forward. Right now, we're not given any set target, but we can establish those at the division and school level based on where we are. Some schools have more offerings than others and so it'll need to be specific, but I can't give you a number right this minute. But the data we'll share with you will help get us there.
Thank you so much. And then the last question is, would it be possible to see at some point, slide 31 has disciplinary data, could we get a breakdown of that by gender and then also by educational level?
Absolutely.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Mr. Wilk.
In the effort of time and then being at the end here and not having a whole lot left on my questions, I'm going to email you the last couple of requests that I have to get those to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I'll do, I think Ms. Williams has a official, official document here for you.
So it doesn't get lost in my brain.
I too will email the questions like I, like I mentioned earlier. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to put in one plug because many of you spoke about college readiness, that we have the Parents Summit that will be coming up in January, which was very important for our parents to attend, to not only learn about college and entrance into college, being prepared, but also about transitions, transitions from elementary to middle school and middle school to high school. So please come out to our Parents Summit this year in January. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll add to that, I actually, we just took office when that happened last year. So I got to go and it was an amazing, amazing thing. So I hope it continues to grow. So thank you. Moving right along, that 1501 took a shade under two hours. So moving right along to 16.01 fiscal year 2017 quarter budget review. Mr. Klein.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Walz. Mr. John Wallingford, the Director of Financial Services, will provide an update relative to the first quarter results for fiscal year 2017.
Chairman Sowers, members of the board, Dr. Walz. The first quarter of the fiscal year has ended and the presentation I have for you will provide you with the results of operations as the end, at the end of the first quarter. The first slide you see here shows you sources of funds. You can see that we have a general reserve available balance of just under $5.7 million. The holdback reserve has been spent down. It is, actually has a negative balance of $155,800. We have additional revenue coming to the school division as a result of the fiscal 16 audits and the county revenue true-up. We'll be seeing those funds transferred to us in the December timeframe. This next item you can see, as a result of the, the budget shortfalls that you're aware of at the state level, Prince William County schools will likely lose about $3.7 million. That was to be a supplement to help fund our raises. We were made aware of that during the budget process, that that was contingent upon sufficient state revenues. And then the last item you can see here is a result of increased enrollment beyond our forecasts. Because of that, we would expect to receive about $3.2 million in addition state revenue beyond what we forecasted. This next slide you see what we expect to use funds on this year. You can see the beginning numbers, the balance of 9.7 from the prior page. The next item, we expect to spend about $1.5 million in the holdback throughout the rest of the year. Note here, already through the end of October, we've spent about $600,000 of that funding. So that number has already gone down to about $900,000. The projected, the final number here you see is the projected additional cost of those 704 students I mentioned. And that is another use of funds, about $7.9 million, leaving us with $373,000, approximately So to provide a little context, I've added this slide that compares those reserve balances at the end of the first quarter 17, the current balances relative to last year's. And you can see that the holdback reserve are comparable. Last year's was a couple hundred thousand dollars higher. You can see the general reserve last year was just a hair over $6 million. And the number I just shared with you is about $373,000. The total of those two reserves you can see is about five, about $6 million difference. So finally, outlook for the rest of the fiscal year. General reserve has been, at this point, fully utilized to help fund enrollment beyond what we forecasted. The holdback reserve has also been utilized. We expect to spend roughly another $900,000 there through, through the rest of the year. A point I want to make here with regard to annual savings that we typically talk about is, as we go into the second and third quarter, because this is a first quarter report, we don't include those salary savings. The data isn't good enough yet at this point. So as we look at the second and then at the third quarter reports, as we have in the past, those numbers will be included. Again, they're not included here. Our expectation for revenues throughout the first quarter is that they're on target currently. The Revenue Forecasting Committee that meets as we begin the, the budgetary process for fiscal 18 will be starting soon and we'll be having conversations about both current year and coming year revenues. And then as we approach the end of the second quarter, we'll come back to you with similar kinds of presentations that again will include some of those salary numbers that I mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you. Open the floor. Questions, comments? Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First question, can we see a breakdown on the 700 additional students in terms of demographic breakdown?
We can certainly provide that. Yes, sir.
That'd be very helpful. Second, a second isn't really a question so much as a statement. I guess we heard a lot over the summer about the reductions in state funds and I think there was a, at least I thought that we were going to have a discussion about what we're going to do to address those shortfalls. I am honestly surprised, if not shocked, that without a board vote, we're pulling almost $6 million out of the general fund to cover things and we're moving forward on that without a discussion. I would, would have thought we would have had some kind of work session, discussion, update, and a vote before doing something like that. But anyway.
Thank you, Ms. Deutsch. Does your comments, Ms. Satterwhite?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I know that was something along the lines of what Mr. Deutsch said, and I had a conversation with Mr. Klein today, too. When I first looked at this, I was also shocked with the general reserve pretty much being gutted because we do have this influx of students that we didn't expect and because of the state funding that was cut that, as we know, was questionable as to whether or not we'd receive it. I'm concerned, too. And I looked back over several years of our first quarter budget reviews and there's not anything going back before I got on the board that shows the general reserve being used at this kind of volume to back up the first quarter. And so it was just kind of shocking. I know it went before I got on the board and the very beginning of my time on the board, I know we had some money from the stimulus program. And we hit the recession since then. But this was very shocking. And I understand from talking to Mr. Klein today that with timing, that we weren't able to get these numbers until now. But if you could explain that so the public can understand about the timing and why we're finding this out now, I'd really appreciate it.
Ms. Satterwhite, I think the first part is that if you look at the use of the general reserve, for the last several years, we've been in a position in which our rate of growth for students has actually been declining. And I think we've had, in some of our budget work sessions, we've talked about the fact that at some point this is likely to turn around and go up. When we discussed the budget last spring and, and in beginning of the summer, we had talked about the fact that we had a concern that there are likely to be additional students coming forth this year. And that, in fact, the general reserve was the, the likely source of funds in order to offset the, the distribution of monies to the schools. And part of the sense of timing is certainly the, the report that you're seeing here tonight was certainly provided and posted to the board two weeks ago. At the same time, in order to react and respond to the changes in the school's budget, we need to go ahead and make those adjustments to the school budget so that they can go out, in this particular case, make sure that they have funding to go out and, and hire the additional staff so we're moving forward and that we're not sitting waiting on the distribution of monies in, in order to get the additional staff on board for, in, in this case, 704 students above projection. And I believe it was something just over, almost 1,700 additional students going into this year. So yes, it is a significant change from what we've seen the last several years in the sense of, yes, we've seen a jump in growth. We're going to have to look at the projections and that will certainly, again, have an impact not only on fiscal year 17, but on fiscal year 18. The, the other element, as Mr. Wallingford indicated, is while we show the balances are dramatically reduced at this point, one is the, the holdback allocation has about $900,000 in it. And at this point, we have not projected the savings that we might traditionally see as we go forward into the year, in particular in areas of salaries and benefits, because we generally try to be a little bit conservative because we can't go negative in that area. So I think we're still looking at a reasonably decent, we're not, we don't have a need to go out and cut everything in sight. I think we're in a reasonably good position. The governor has also come out and said that at this point, they are anticipating that while the $3.7 million is a potential reduction, that they're not anticipating any further reductions to K-12 education, at least within 2017, and probably, other than salary at this point, 2018. Long-winded answer, but we'll, we'll also, the House Appropriations and Senate Finance Committees meet in about two weeks. And at that point in time, we should have a better understanding and feel for what is happening with the state economy.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. I appreciate that. And you anticipated one of my questions when mentioning about, we'll have to look at projections again. That was going to be one of my next questions is, what are we doing with projections? So I appreciate that comment and we'll be looking forward to those new projections. Mr. Wallingford, Mr. Klein, thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite. Anyone else? Just for, I just want, just one quick, just make sure I'm not, it seems as simple as it probably is, but just to make sure we're clear here. So just looking at slide four, it is as simple as what it reads, which is, at this point last year, we had $7.9 million in reserves and right now, we have 1.8.
Correct.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, moving right along to superintendent's time. Dr. Walz, I believe you asked me for an update. It is 4:01 in the fifth, 4:01 in the fifth, Dr. Walz. You didn't actually ask me, I just checked anyway. But yeah, 4:01 in the fifth. I'm sorry, the Cubs. I apologize. The Cubs. Spoiler alert. I should have said that first. Spoiler alert. Dr. Walz.
Thank you. Well, we have great news to share and the student that I'm about to mention to you, I actually personally know. Eleanor Ren Seacrest, a 13-year-old eighth grader who attends Benton Middle School, won the Broadcom Masters. That's a national middle school STEM competition and she won $25,000 for leadership and innovation. She, she won the National Middle School STEM Competition. Her research was on cold gas rockets. Congratulations, Eleanor. I would like to add that Eleanor has been involved in our school division's robotics program since elementary school and now mentors students at her former school. Congratulations to the 2016 youth salute leaders in their respective schools. Youth salute winner Mary Emma Beatty from Osmond Park High School and runner-up Kelly Isbell from Battlefield High School recently attended the town meeting of tomorrow in St. Louis. The awards were presented by the Prince William County Council on Youth Leadership. Two teams of Stonewall Middle School students will be competing in the first qualification round of the Cyber Patriot Competition on November 12th at George Mason University. Cyber Patriot is a national youth cyber defense competition which is sponsored by numerous technology companies. Stonewall Middle School is the first middle school in Prince William County to participate in this competition. I congratulate these students for their enthusiasm in learning 21st century technology skills as well as their teachers, coaches, and mentors. They will compete for six hours on November 12th. So we wish the teams good luck. Two of our high schools brought home awards from the Virginia High School Theater Festival. Woodbridge High School students won a Best Music Award for their production of Return to the Forbidden Planet. Senior Fatima Defan earned an All-Star Cast Award. Senior Christian Ellis won first place in the On the Spot Play Writing Competition. Patriot High School students performed- Patriot High School students performed their one-act play Disney's High School Musical, and junior Carly Hopkins won a Best Actress Award. Congratulations to these students and their teachers, directors, and their entire cast from both of these schools. Again, these were awards that were given out at the Kennedy Center. The public is invited to an important meeting in the proposed site for the 13th High School on November 9. This meeting will be held in the auditorium of Stonewall Jackson High School from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Walz. Moving right along to item 18.01. Ms. Jesse, this is your item, a Safe Schools Advisory Council reappointment.
I would like to reappoint Mr. Corey Holman. He has been on that council for quite some time. And as I've talked to Ms. Hart, she says he really provides a great deal of insight. So I would like to ask the board to reappoint Mr. Corey Holman.
Thank you, Ms. Jesse, and I will second that motion. Is there any further discussion? I, I'll briefly say that I've gotten to know Mr. Holman a little bit, too, through a Safe Schools Advisory Council. I know Mr. Brand knows him well, and proud to make the second, and if any, with no further discussion doesn't seem like, we'll call the vote. Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Thank you.
Vote is eight yes unanimous. Motion passed.
Item 18.02, Ms. Jesse, Ms. Ralston, Ms. Williams, Discussion of the Appointment of a Student Representative on the School Board as Permitted by Virginia Code 22.1-86.1. Ms. Jesse, Ralston, or Williams, whoever would like to have the floor first. Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an idea I've been kind of bouncing around for a few years. And after attending NSBA last year, I was reignited by this idea. I know that Ms. Ralston and Ms. Jesse also are supportive, in support of this. I will say that in doing this, from my perspective, I very much would like to have, at this time, a non-voting member. I know that we have some school boards around the county that have voting representatives. But I would also like to pay special consideration to reaching a student that maybe is not typically thought of as someone who would serve as a student representative. When we develop guidelines or applications and recommendations for selecting students, how we are going to go about selecting students to, to serve on the board. I sent this out earlier. Sorry, I'm forgetting something. I saw it earlier. I think it's important because our students are, are constituents, really, and truly. It's all about them and their learning and progressing through the school system, and they're, they deserve to be heard. And I would like to hear from more than just our student who is maybe student council president, but maybe that average student that doesn't talk a lot, that's like by himself at lunch or something. They, they have a perspective that I think that we don't hear from enough, and I, and I hope that as we develop this idea and make it a reality that we find a way to reach that student as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms., I'm sorry, Ms. Jesse.
Good evening. I want to thank Dr. Walz, and when this idea, I asked him to look into the possibility of students on the board. I tell you, one of the things that really helped me with this decision, I've always been a student involvement type of individual anyway, but when we had the situation at Woodbridge High School, and we had to have the town hall meeting over there because of what was happening in the bathroom, one of the parents came to the podium in that church and said, so that, she said, "I, I left home, and I said, 'Is there anything you'd like to share with the community?' And he said, 'Why are you talking about us, but you didn't involve us?' And that really did influence my thinking." And so I passed out this sound out voice in school, and it has a great deal of research for those of you who want to look at what the parameters, because there are lots of parameters. There are many states that have student representatives on the board. Virginia does, and Fairfax does. There are actually some states that don't allow student representation on the board. So one of the things, why have students on the board? The one thing they say here is democracy. Anything about us, without us, is not for us. So it's putting democracy into action. I know we need to look at things such as, do we want a person on the board for a year? Do we actually want to do this? Do we want to have that person for a full year? Do we want to rotate it? Do we want to look at various schools on the east and on the west? There's a lot of things that we really need to look at. So what I would like to have done at this, the next meeting, is just to give the superintendent and his staff permission to do some research and bring that information back to us, if it's okay with the other members of the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jesse. Ms. Ralston.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Where I come from, we had a member, we had two students on the school board, lasted for years and years. It was really good because their thoughts are nothing like the grownups' thoughts. They actually would tell you if we were, you know, they were going over the top with something, but it was really, I think, a great opportunity. And they attended most of the, what am I trying to think of, conferences, and where they would also have the student board, you know, representative. So I'm really pleased to see this happen. I think it will say a lot about us. And then I guess the superintendent will develop a plan. Am I right? That's what you're going to be doing?
If that is the will of the board, absolutely.
Well, let the board decide. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good answer, Dr. Walz. Anyone else? Mr. Walz.
Little known fact, when I was a senior in high school, one of our school board members fell off a dock and died. Yeah. Oh, and so there was an open seat and appointment, and I applied and ran for it as a senior in high school, to which I did earn one of the six votes from the board members, but the other five said it would be a major conflict of interest to have a senior in high school actually have more powerful, power than the principal and the superintendent. But the guidelines of this, I definitely support the idea of having a student involved. I like, Mr. Deutsch and I were conferring over here and talking about kind of a rotation process or something like that with our high schools to get a diverse selection, because our schools are very different. And, yeah. And the other, my only concern is, and I think maybe this will come up later when we talk about, like, you know, parliamentary procedure, is trying to, we already have some late meetings, and adding another person on that also, I mean, so my thing is, we'd have to figure out a way for all of us kind of to manage this, because the more people we add, the more dialogue, conversation, and stuff. So, not that that's a bad thing, but if we all could restrict kind of our comments and our time, that might be something that might help with this decision.
Thank you, Mr. Walz. I'll chime in briefly, because I, I won't repeat what you just said, but I do agree strongly that I think ultimately, if this is something we need to do, which I'm very open to the idea, I think, you know, maybe putting, as was even suggested in some of our board training, putting an end time toward meetings or a goal end time towards meetings, and, and they're, you know, obviously molding the agenda to fit appropriately, even controlling debate, timing debate on certain items, whether they're on for information or for action, those types of things can certainly help do that. There's, I think there's many steps we can do other than just setting an arbitrary end time, but also put things in place to make sure that we get there. Because things like the strategic plan, I joked earlier, but they're obviously very serious things that we need to spend plenty of time on reviewing and have an open discussion about. So I'm not against that as well. And I did reach out, I do happen to know at least a little bit the family of, of the, the former student representative of Fairfax County who just graduated last year and is now, I believe, a freshman at Princeton. And so I reached out to them to, to get their thoughts on this, and they absolutely love the program. So no, that doesn't mean I think we have to do it exactly like Fairfax does it. I don't think that's, that's 100% necessary. I think we can do it our own way, and in fact, I'm not even exactly sure how they do it. But I am certainly open to the idea. But I do think things like time with a student or students sitting up here, depending if they rotate, would be a very important factor on that. So, anyone else? Ms. Satterwhite.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Everybody knows we had a rough start as a board as we got going. And I think this is a good idea. I like the idea of maybe a rotation of students because it does give more students an opportunity to be involved in our local government. I like that idea. I do like the idea of giving it to the superintendent, asking him to come up with some ideas for us and some suggested guidance. I think that's a good idea, too. I think we still need a little bit more time as a board. Now, understandably, this would probably not happen until next school year, and that does give us that, that time that we need. And I, I know we're moving in the right direction with our code of ethics, and as the chairman just said, too, there are some things we can do with self-governing to improve the pace of our meetings, and I think that's going to help considerably also. So those are some concerns that I have, because we, as a board, have to be able to work together and set a good example if we're going to bring students and have them involved. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite. Anyone else? Mr. Deutsch.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I like this idea a lot. I think, I've talked to school board members in Loudon where they actually rotate their student reps, and they have one from each high school. And so they have a pool of them that are the student reps for the year, and then one each month gets to sit on dais with them and go to dinners and go to all the events. So some kind of rotation that, you know, helps facilitate a diversity of students would be good. I'll just say, if we're going to do this, let's actually come up with a proposal ourselves. We've tasked the superintendent with a lot, and throwing something else on his plate right now to develop for it would, we just got to let him stay focused on the essential things, and something like this, we can come up with the proposals and work it out ourselves.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. And Mr. Brand?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I like this idea as well. As, as a former teacher in the school system for seven years, I had the opportunity to teach many impressive students. And I think there's a lot they could offer in terms of their perspective, especially, you know, to our school system and to all of us. I do have some questions. I, I think the process does have to be defined clearly. We want, we want to make sure we're headed in the right direction. There's things like closed session items, disciplinary issues. I, I don't think those would be fair game for a student representative, but just, just want to make sure we clarify those items. I do agree with Ms. Williams. I, I don't think the student representative needs to be a voting member. But I think there's a lot that a student could add to the school board. Again, we should take our time with this, and either, either Dr. Walz, or, or we kind of come up with a plan if you're out the best way forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brand. And Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to follow up by saying that I just, to members of the board, one of the comprehensive reports on student, school board members through the states who have them, I've sent to each of you so that it'll help answer some of those questions. And I do want to emphasize that I think in doing this, that we should really seriously be creative and think outside the box, and not just think of a body in a chair at the end of the dais. Because I think there's more than one way to have a student representative, and I think that we should do it in a way that our students can identify with, and that may be being more creative and using some technology, and not just necessarily having a student sit at the end of the dais. But I think that we should think about it from their perspective and use, and keep in mind how they live, think, and function in today's society, and bringing some of that into the board is also what I'm thinking of. So I'm not just thinking of having a person at the end of the dais with a name plate, but really, truly embracing today's youth and how they function and think, and having that appear with us in addition to how we operate. So just expanding that box a little bit, and I just would like for us to keep that in mind while thinking about this, and definitely not for this year, for next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. McGowan.
I just wanted to clarify that under Virginia law, a student representative can only act in a non-voting advisory capacity.
Thank you. Item 18.03, Revision of Policy 403.1 Hazardous Materials, First Reading. Mr. Klein.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Walz. As a part of our normal process for bringing forward updates to policy and regulation, we're bringing forward Policy 403.1 for hazardous materials, and this deals with hazardous waste disposal and removal. The policy and regulation have basically been updated for language. There's really not any substantive change to the process or the program. And just so someone understands, hazardous materials in this case would probably be best defined as things like paint. So if we have excess paint in a building or cleaning solvents, there are many things in a building that would be defined with the safety data sheets as being a hazardous material, and you can't just pour them down the drain. We want to make sure they're disposed of in the normal process. This simply provides that procedure, and the language in the policy and regulation have been updated.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. Any questions or comments on the hazardous materials update? Thank you. Moving along, Mr. Brand, this is your item, 18.04, Prince William County School Board Code of Ethics.
In the early part of October, in the first Saturday in October, we had some board training, and one of our items on our agenda that day was working together, collaborating on a potential Prince William County School Board Code of Ethics. This is not out-of-the-box thinking. If you do a little research, you'll find out that it's, there's often some guidance from the National School Board Association, the Virginia School Board Association to have something in place in school systems. Did a little, little research on my own, and I, you know, found some neighboring counties like Loudon, for example, and also Falkir, and I found some similar code of ethics or code of conducts out there for those school systems. And some of the language, a lot of the items that they put in there are very similar to what we have in our draft copy for our Prince William County School Board Code of Ethics. So I'm going to make a recommendation that we consider adding this code of ethics for our board members. And, Mr. Chairman, I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Mr. Brand. Anyone else? Thank you. Moving along, right along, Mr. Deutsch, this is yours. I know it's been pushed a little bit, so this is your item. Designation of Division Counsel, Ms. Mary McGowan, as the official school board parliamentarian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Prince William School Board designate the Division Counsel, Ms. Mary McGowan, as the official board parliamentarian. School board members will be able to ask procedural questions of the parliamentarian anytime during meetings. The parliamentarian's decision will be final regarding issues of order and proper procedure. I believe the school board member, Ralston, has an amendment she would like to offer.
We don't have a second yet. We can't offer any amendments. Is there a second to the motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that.
Ms. Satterwhite. Oh, hold on one second. Mr. Deutsch, this is your item. You're on for discussion, debate.
Yeah, I believe this is a, a good idea, and I believe that Ms. Ralston has an amendment that will make it an even better one.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible].
Hold on one second. That's fine. Okay. Ms. Jesse, had her, I want to ask them for my attention on this as well. So Ms. Jesse, go ahead.
Well, I actually have a substitute motion. I think that we, everything I've, in all the training that we've received, everyone tells me that it's our responsibility to monitor ourselves. And I do think we need some parliamentarian help. I'm not sure that we need to spend the money for an outside counsel. And I'm not, not sure about the, whether or not Ms. McGowan, I had indication that she was not really that interested in assuming this position. So I came up with a substitute motion, and my motion is that instead of hiring an outsider at a costly rate, it's going to cost us some money if we have to hire someone. I would like for, that we hire a consultant with the expertise to provide training for every member of this board. I think every member of this board needs to be trained, and that we should hold each one of us accountable, and not necessarily have an outside person come in to do it. I do agree with Mr. Deutsch. We really do need some support in terms of following parliamentary procedure. I attended parliamentary procedure as a, when I went for vice chairman training, I know that they have someone in Richmond, not in Richmond, in Charlottesville, that does that kind of work. And of course, I think Ms. McGowan has given us the names of some And of course, I think Ms. McGowan has given us the names of some individuals. I just think that we need training, and we need to manage our own board.
Okay. Ms. Jessie, I have the substitute motion. Just make sure I got this right, that the Prince William County School Board hire an outside consultant for parliamentary training for the entire school board. Is that satisfactory? Okay. Is there a second? Ms. Williams? Okay. Now, discussion. Anything else, Ms. Jessie?
No, I'm not... I'm a little... To the chair.
Yeah, her mic was... Your mic was off for a little bit there, but... Okay. Got that. Anyone else on this? Ms. Williams? No, okay, I'm sorry. I mean, again, I think it's... We've talked about this a little bit back and forth a couple of different ways, so I won't be lengthy. I think ultimately, I agree with this in a way that it's a little cheaper in the long run, and it certainly doesn't... It doesn't take out the fact that if we wanted to hire a parliamentarian later, we certainly could go down that road after we all received training on it. Clearly, Robert's Rules of Order, even just parliamentary procedure are, you know, it's kind of everybody's responsibility at the same time. And obviously, it can be a dicey issue along the way, especially when things get contentious. So I think this is a good first step in the right direction to make sure that everybody kind of gets on the same page as far as what's allowed and what's not allowed. Anyone else? Ms. Ralston, your microphone is on.
Well, it's already on. Okay. I'm going to go along with this, but I believe that we do need help. I think that we need someone to work with us because everybody's perception of what the parliamentary rule says will just... It'll just be chaos going back and forth trying to find the right page. So let me make sure, Mr. Chairman, if you wouldn't mind...
Yes, ma'am.
Please restate the amendment that Ms. Jessie is offering. Thank you.
Just to be clear, it's a substitute motion that the Prince William County School Board hire an outside consultant for parliamentary training for the entire school board.
We're not going to ask Mary, Ms. McGowan, if she's participating in this in some way?
No, not at this time.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I think you might have to go through the Virginia Procurement Act. I'll be happy to work with the purchasing department.
Thank you. Mr. Deutsch, your mic is on?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I think training is important, but I think at the end of the day, we still actually need a parliamentarian to help us. As things come up in the board meetings, that's where we actually need help. I think it's everybody's... Everybody should continue to improve as a board member, but we still are going to need somebody to actually be there during board meetings. Having a parliamentarian is normal for any deliberative body, and we should go forward and do that.
Anyone else? Ms. Satterwhite?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to agree with Mr. Deutsch on this, too. I do feel like we needed to have somebody designated as a parliamentarian. As has been said, there's no doubt that we need the training, and that would be helpful to all of us in understanding how the processes go. But I think for at least temporary, as we've discussed in previous meetings, I think having a parliamentarian designated, whether it's Ms. McGowan or someone hired, I think is a good idea, and so I'm not very pleased with the substitute motion.
Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite. Anyone else? Ms. Jessie?
I think that we can always bring in... I think we get the training, and if we find that we really cannot handle our own parliamentary procedures with training, I am more than willing to bring in an outside person. But when I looked at the amount of money we're going to spend for a parliamentarian to be here, it's quite a bit of money for us to spend. But I... So I would like for us to consider at least trying the idea of all of us receiving the training initially. And then I'm open to looking at things down the road.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Mr. Brand?
I'm going to speak for Mr. Trinum, who originally proposed this action, designating Ms. McGowan as the official board parliamentarian. I know there's been some hesitation on that, and I understand that, and Mrs. McGowan's concerns on that. So I do think the idea that Mr. Deutsch came up with in terms of perhaps hiring an outside parliamentarian is a good idea. And, you know, just someone that's new to this board and someone that's definitely observed it from the beginning of the year and also the prior board, a little help goes a long way. And whether it's through training or adding an additional parliamentarian, I think it's a good idea. But I think if we make the decision to add a parliamentarian, I think it's a good one. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brand. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with my fellow board members. I just want to express the fact that it's very hard for us to determine... Or I would imagine it would be very hard for us to determine the need or the necessity for a parliamentarian and who that person should be if we are not all up to speed on Robert's Rules of Order and how a meeting should run and what exactly a parliamentarian's duties are. So I would caution that kind of... To me, it seems like jumping the gun. I was trained in other boards that I've served on, and that is a basic incoming procedure that happens when you decide to make a decision, either when you are appointed or you are asked to serve on a board and you undertake that position. Parliamentary procedure is something is automatic part of your orientation. So I agree with Ms. Jessie the most in the sense that I think it's a... It would be a good idea for us to receive the training before we make a decision on who should or should not be our parliamentarian.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. And is that... Mr. Deutsch, just before I call, and you make sure no one else wants to go a second time, just make sure. I try to remember it as I go. Mr. Deutsch, you're good to go.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Even the best-trained legislative bodies still have parliamentarians. It's the way most normal legislative bodies are created and established. So I think we should vote no on this amendment and move forward and actually have a parliamentarian.
And Ms. Satterwhite?
Mr. Chairman, when we were looking and we were considering hiring a parliamentarian, we actually asked Ms. McGowan to get information for us so we would have an idea of what the cost was. Now the question is hiring someone to provide training for us. We don't have an idea of the cost, and yet we're being asked to vote on it. So I'm a little concerned about voting on that tonight when we don't have an idea of what the cost would be for the trainer, for parliamentarian, because we're talking about cost, but yet we don't have the cost of the alternative tonight. So that's a concern for me.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Ralston.
I'd like for Ms. McGowan to speak up if she doesn't mind.
She's... Again, she's here for legal questions, so I don't... If you have a specific legal question you'd like to address to Ms. McGowan, then we can go that route.
I don't know if it's legal. How much is the person going to cost?
Your microphone, Ms. McGowan.
I'm used to being a potted plant. I think that Ms. Ralston's referring to the schedule of rates that I provided the board some time ago. Yeah, in which there was a quote for hourly services. And I think that amount... I actually have it with me. It's $175 an hour, although there are teaching workshops and presentations for between $300 and $500, depending on the number of hours.
Thank you. So the idea being that would be a one-time thing to see if we needed... Then go from there, get trained properly, and then if needed later, we could always go the parliamentarian route. With that, I will call the vote. So here's what I am calling the vote on, to be clear, to learn my lesson from last meeting when I wasn't clear on this. We are simply voting on the substitute motion, the substitute motion only, which is that the Prince William County School Board hire an outside consultant for parliamentary training for the entire school board. That is what we're voting on, that the Prince William County School Board hire an outside consultant for parliamentary training for the entire school board. Those in favor of the motion, please signify yes by raising your right hand. Got it. Mr. Wilk, Ms. Ralston, Sawyers, Jessie, and Williams. And those voting no, please signify as no by raising your right hand. Mr. Brand, Ms. Satterwhite, and Mr. Deutsch.
The vote is five yes, three no. Motion passed.
Moving on to board matters. We will start... Mr. Wilk, you went last, last time. I apologize for that, so you will go first this time. Mr. Wilk?
Reminder about the upcoming boundary meetings. Last couple of weekends, I went back out knocking on doors because I had so much fun last fall, knocking on doors in Potomac Shores and Eagle Point to let residents know about the upcoming boundary meetings and to introduce myself to some newer residents. Want to thank Montclair Elementary for inviting me to Montclair Monster Mash last Friday night. I attended it with my wife and two sons. They both were dressed up as Ninja Turtles. I was the shredder. I play a good villain. Triangle has a book fair night, had a book fair night, excuse me. That was fun. Their theme was pirates. That was really cool. Huge community turnout. Loved seeing so many people reading and actually standing in these crazy long lines. It looked like holiday season back in the day when I worked at retail at Abercrombie &amp; Fitch, but it was for books, so that was interesting. So that was good. And then, being a fan of the arts and representing them equally, last night I attended the Potomac High School Orchestra Concert. Congrats to Mr. Carroll and his string students. Great event. Also, finally want to thank den leader, Ms. Castillo, for inviting me to speak with the Cub Scouts at Ashland Elementary two weeks ago. And I think that's it for my activities last two weeks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wilk. Mr. Deutsch?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As I was looking at the calendar, I realized that tomorrow is actually the one-year anniversary of when we were elected as a board. And I just want to say to the public, thank you for that honor. It really is humbling when you see the people vote for you for an office like this. And so just want to take that moment and say thank you. We... Let's see. One of the cool things I attended this last week was the Stonewall Jackson OP football game. It was a fun match. They also had their homecoming celebration going on at the same time. OP has an exciting event coming up in December, and it's crazy to think that December is only a month away right now. But I believe it's December 6 at Hilton Performing Arts. OP is spearheading a performance of Handel's Messiah. Everybody is invited. I think they're doing it in... Along with, I think, Patriot in Brentsville. I think they're doing it with two other high schools. I have heard from people who have been there before that people claim that it rivals the Kennedy Center. So let's all go have fun as we kick off the Christmas season.
Thank you, Mr. Deutsch. Ms. Satterwhite?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. As the superintendent mentioned, there is an information meeting for the 13th High School at Stonewall Jackson High School on Wednesday, November 9 from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. I want to specially mention this to our elementary school parents because it is our... And early middle school parents because it is our... It is our fourth through sixth grade students currently who will be the first students in the new high school when it opens in the fall of 2021. So this should be of extreme interest to them if you live in the Brentsville, Gainesville districts and might be in one of the areas that might be impacted by the boundaries or by the new school. Next Tuesday, we've got a big event on November 8. I encourage everybody to get out and vote. Absentee voting is available through Saturday at select locations. Make sure to check the elections board if you are not going to be able to vote on Tuesday. And I want to apologize to the superintendent for not being able to make the superintendent's business breakfast. I've had some concerns with an elderly sick relative, and I've had to miss several events. Also, to Ronald Reagan Middle School, I was supposed to go to the archery event and was not able to attend. So my apologies for having to miss a couple of things last few weeks, and I hope to get back on track. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Satterwhite. Ms. Jessie?
As I mentioned earlier, we went to Roanoke, and I don't want to go into the details, but Dr. Bishop, the superintendent of Roanoke City School, I want to publicly thank her for spending the time with the four of us as guests in her school division. She provided lunch for us and a great deal of time. She will be attending the Virginia Board of our next conference in November, and I invite all of you to meet with her and chat with her. They talked... She talked about what that school system has done to ensure that all children learn. And I just want to read her mission, the mission statement that is kind of a collaborative statement from the board and from the superintendent's staff. What I really liked about this was that the board and the superintendent's staff worked together to come up with a plan. And her mission, graduate students prepared for life in a rapidly changing world. Her vision, to be a model for public education. And I would see us looking at being world-class and being a model world-class school division and honoring our diversity and learning, high levels of learning for all students. Again, thanks to Dr. Walts and his staff for allowing his staff to go with me on that trip. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Jessie. Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd just like to start my board matters tonight by, again, congratulating our... thanking our staff for the wonderful presentation tonight and also by just saying I really do appreciate the hard work that you have been doing and my time in schools this year so far. I can definitely tell that the work is making it down to the ground level, and it's very much appreciated. Also, I have some slides somewhere if the IT department can put them up. It's much, much delayed and much, much late, but I went to Leesylvania Elementary School for back-to-school night, and I just wanted to share something that I thought that the principal... And it kind of... Not kind of, but it really does fit in with our discussion for this evening. And that is the principal put these huge boards up on the hallway for the staff and for the parents and for the... To comment on what their hope is or what their goal is for the school year. And I thought this was really neat because it's something that our students can see every day when they walk into the building. So they get an opportunity to see not only what their teachers' expectations and beliefs and hopes and dreams are for them, but also their parents' commentary, and then students as well. So you can't really read up there what's written, but it... Well, there's a small example right there. Thank you, IT. Awesome. But it's just another way of reaching our school community in a collaborative style that's visual, that is open for everyone. I love that one. So I can read... I love how the student thinks, wants to improve his vocabulary so he can read a higher-level book. I just think that that's awesome. So it's just little things like that that I think is what makes the difference and what helps us all continue to believe in our mission, and that is to provide a world-class education. And it fits right in with our strategic goals and everything that we're trying to do by just doing it in a creative way. That's kind of fun. So that's another version of Lori Williams's definition of fun, because I'm sort of a nerd. But I think that that's fun. So that's sort of along the lines of what I'm looking for. And I just thought that that's something that should be shared with our school community and our viewing audience because it's something that's so easy to do, so personable, but means so much to all involved. So in addition to that, I have not been to as many things as I would like to be, to have gone to, but I'm going to pick up the pace. And I encourage our students, as I've been told by some high schoolers in our No School November, as they have kindly dubbed it due to all of the holiday, election day, and everything else that's going on, that you would continue to read while you're out of school, and not just books, but anything. You know, I often say that in my house, 20 minutes a day for reading. And it doesn't just mean pick up a book. It could mean read a newsletter or an Evine or a comic book or whatever the case may be because it's important to continue to do that, and especially while we have so much time out during November. And last but not least, please go vote and bring your kids with you so they can have a whole nother generation of voters. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Mr. Brand?
Okay, first of all, I attended the superintendent's business breakfast last Thursday, which was on October 27. I was definitely want to thank all those businesses that support Prince William County Schools. And also, I was definitely impressed by all the STEAM and STEM projects of our elementary, middle, and high school students. Like Ms. Satterwhite, I look forward to seeing many Princeville District residents and parents, and also Gainesville District, I'm sure, residents and parents. At the Litten Hall Road Rollins Forward 13th High School meeting, which is one week from tonight at Stonewall Jackson High School, that meeting starts at 7:00 p.m. And as we know, that school's opening in 2021 will definitely have an effect on school populations and boundaries in western Prince William County. And I've noticed that our topic of boundaries is already a big topic online. I'd like to thank Cedar Point Elementary for inviting me to their Veterans Day event on Thursday, November 10. I look forward to attending and celebrating veterans in our local community. And I would like to thank Prince William County Schools for making Veterans Day a priority and a holiday on our school calendar. That doesn't always happen in other local school districts, including our neighbors in Fairfax. Most importantly, I want to thank our veterans of the U.S. military who have served our country at home and abroad. As we know, that definitely has an effect, and their families are often away from their families for extended periods of time. So please keep your own school board member, from the Benchfield District, Gil Trinum, in your thoughts because he's making that sacrifice of being away from his family. in your thoughts, because he's making that sacrifice of being away from his family right now while he's deployed to Africa. And last but not least, I do want to thank the Brentsville District student who, who presented us this information tonight, who's still here. I look forward to reading that, and thank you for bringing that to us. That's definitely something I can support, so thank you for being here so late and bringing that to our, to us tonight. Mr. Chairman, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Brand. I like the tossback. We should do that more often. Ms. Ralston?
Is this sports? I toss it back to you. That's right. Thank you, Mr. Uh, yes, no, but, no, I'm sorry. I was reading this. I'm sorry. Mr. Chairman, this has been a very interesting week, and I'm so proud of the students at Bevel Middle School for getting to meet the president and first lady. And it's not every day that you just think you're going on a regular field trip and this happens to you. So congratulations to them once again. I attended a breakfast and books, which was very, very good, and it was at Carydale Elementary School. And parents bring their children, and they have a little breakfast, and they get books, and they sit at a table, and they read, and you can take them home and bring them back to school later. And they've, she, the principal is really sure that she has been moving the bar on reading, and reading with comprehension at that. So this is elementary school, there was a bunch of kids, bunch of kids. Last month, she said she had 70 households that showed up with children, and they had books for them all to read. So once again, we're doing great things in Neapsco, so I look forward to telling you some more great things next time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ralston. I also, obviously, attended the business breakfast as well. My first one is Chairman, and it's a wonderful event, and, and she, she gets a lot, a lot of kudos, of course, but Sharon Henry and Spark, they do a phenomenal job for the school system, and we really can't say enough for what they do to, to not only fill in some holes, but also with their innovative grant program. They do amazing things to make our school system better. As many of us, some of you know, maybe not many, some of you know, I like to cook. If many of you know Kathy Benz with Leadership Prince William, she has twisted my arm sufficiently enough that I will be cooking in Gourmet Guys Give Back in December, which will be held at the Linton Hall School, so I hereby request, Dr. Walts, that you make all your employees attend and vote for mine, because there's a people's choice. So you have to figure that out somewhere in there, in there as well. So whatever you gotta, what I cook is still to be determined. It's an argument within my house right now, Ms. Jessie. So we will get there. And then I had a little fun little moment today. My wife was actually heading out to the Gainesville, the Gainesville Middle School PTO meeting, which, which was this morning. So we kind of alternate, and I had the honor of walking my, my third grader to the bus stop, and then, which isn't very far from the house at all, just a few houses down. And then all the other elementary school kids reminded me that it's Walk to School Day, and of course, we live very, very close to Glen Kirk Elementary School. So I ended up not only walking my daughter, but another, I think, a kindergartner and a fourth or fifth grader and a first grader. I ended up carrying several backpacks along the way, because I got a little heavy for them along the way, but it was, it was a fun walk. And from, from our neighborhood first grader, he wanted to tell me his version of The Wizard of Oz, and I could tell you a very long version of it, but my favorite part was when we were going over that the tin man needed a brain and the straw man needed a heart, and I asked him what the lion needed, and he said meat. So with that, there's no further business before this board, this meeting is adjourned.